Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. And so this is the Monday, April the thirteenth, meeting of the Township of Eversburg Cardinal Committee of the Whole Administration and Finance Committee Meeting. Now, we're holding the meeting at one o'clock today, as opposed to six thirty at night, because all members of council are available during today, and so is the staff. So, the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. And Chair's looking for a motion to approve the agenda as circulated. I have Counselor Hunter moving.
Yes, second.
And Counselor Cameron seconding. Those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as circulated. Motion is carried, thank you. And next item on the agenda is disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures here this afternoon?
None by me.
Okay, the Chair notes no disclosures of pecuniary interest, and the minutes will so reflect. And moving on then to item number four. Is business arising from the previous committee meeting? And that is the meeting that was held on March the ninth. Now, is there any business arising from that meeting?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Page two, three quarters of the way down, the SLCDCB, with the committee three times per year, twice a closed session, once an open session.
Yes.
I ask for twice an open session, once in closed session.
Okay, so just the reverse of what's here?
Exactly.
Okay, so can we just, we'll just call out a, an amendment to the agenda? Approve the, excuse me, approve the minutes as amended, small change. Everybody comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know what's gonna happen there, because of even the annual meeting has been postponed. All right, if that's business arising, is there any other business arising from the, from the meeting? Hearing none, I'm about to move on with the next item on the agenda then. And the next item on the agenda is business and delegations and presentations. We have none here today. And item six is discussion items, there's no items up for discussion. So I'll be proceeding to item number seven, which is action and information items. And the first action and information item is the first quarter Treasury report. So that report is now up for discussion. And Chair is prepared to entertain discussion, and one per speaker. For speakers. Four questions. There are no recommendations with this report. Counselor Hunter.
I guess I have one question, find it under expenses for the recreation there. Through the Chair to our Recreation Director, I guess, money had been spent on the Cardinal pool and day camp and stuff.
So, first of all, I want to make sure we're in the right place here. What's your page reference?
Uh, under Parks and Recreation for, it's page three of the report. If I may, I believe, I believe that's in Report seventy.
I think you're ahead of yourself.
Yes.
Yeah, looks like you're in first quarter budget variance report.
Okay.
I'm on the first quarter financial report.
Okay.
Are you, are you on page?
On the, on the.
Page ten of fifty-three?
Nine of fifty-three.
Nine.
Maybe, maybe might be useful to have the Treasurer just give a little highlight of, of, of page nine with respect to the financial report, and then maybe that will, will generate some questions.
Certainly, through the Chair, you'll see the report is slightly different from prior quarters that I've reported on, with an addition of a comparison from last year's balance to this year's balance column, as well as some notes and comments, just kind of explaining the differences or the variances in each of the, of the areas. Overall, I feel after the first quarter of this year compared to last year's quarter, we're relatively in around the same position financially in terms of cash. Our receivables, although our tax receivables are up, that's mainly with, as a result of the extension of the, of the tax deadline. Our accounts receivables are slightly lower than last year, and that's as a result of the decrease in arena ice rental billings. And there's not a whole lot of variances other, other than that in the assets section. Again, very small, minor variances in the liability section. The biggest difference is in the long-term debt. We had taken down, from last year to this year, we've, we've reduced our debt considerably. And the only difference between the year-end number and this quarter is that we added on the addition of a recreational truck loan to our long-term debt.
Okay, and just one question from me. On the reserve and reserve funds, all budgeted transfers have been completed. However, no twenty nineteen year-end transfers have been completed. So the transfers that are completed are the budgeted transfers in, is that correct?
Yeah, correct, budgeted transfers in.
Right. And no, and no final close-off of twenty nineteen yet?
Right, I have not, at this, at this stage, I've not received any final numbers from the auditors. I received an email from him today that they are still working on the adjusting entries and final statements.
Okay. Right, any other questions with this Treasurer's report, Counselor Dillbo is here.
No, no, no.
Okay, so I guess the one that, I guess we're gonna have to keep an eye on is the taxes receivable. And I just want to make a brief statement about that at this point, and I'll be speaking about it a little bit later on. In a year like this, where so many of our folks have been harmed with a lack of employment, even though we've extended our tax due deadline, our risk now is going to be taxes receivable. And because there, there, there is every possibility that although twenty twenty taxes, bills will, will go out in late July or early August, and we may even be under a certain amount of pressure to extend that deadline, the risk is that there will be a fair amount of tax receivable that we may not collect. And we're going to have to somehow get an assessment of just how much risk that gives us. But I don't want to say more about that right now, I'll be talking about it later. So if there are no other comments with regard to this Treasury first quarter financial report, I'm going to now then turn to item number seven B, which is the first quarter budget variance report, and over to Counselor Hunter.
Through the Chair to our Recreation Director, I just noticed that we have already expended money on the pools and day camps. I wondered, not only were operating, yet how come we've got money expended to them, so?
Through the Chair to Counselor Hunter. Some of it is insurance for the facilities, for the billings themselves, that's the big part. There's also hydro cost at each facility, even though the facilities are closed for the winter, there is a monthly fee, and the insurance is almost four thousand dollars just alone for the Cardinal building, the Cardinal will have full. So that's what those figures represent.
Okay. Okay, but just help me out now, because I'm on page twelve of fifty-three. And on twelve of fifty-three, I didn't, under Parks and Recreation, okay, I see. You must, I see, I have to find where Counselor Hunter was here.
If I may, Mr. Chair, on page fourteen.
Yes, okay, now I got it. Yep. No, are there any other questions here? None?
I have a.
Yes.
But then, first of all, on page ten of fifty-three, canteen revenues increased slightly. I think that's a good job I stopped. Always worried about our two canteens, and it's nice to see this is an increase of revenue.
Now, where is that showing?
Page ten of fifty-three, canteen revenues have increased slightly.
Where are the numbers?
I have no numbers there.
To the Treasurer, where would that show?
That way.
So, so the canteen revenue would be on page twelve, under Parks and Recreation. Just two, two above the subtotal for Parks and Recreation. The twenty nineteen year-to-date actual was twenty-seven thousand eight sixty-two, and the twenty twenty year-to-date actual is twenty-nine thousand seven thirty-two.
Okay, and these, and this is as of March the twenty-ninth, and I can't remember what date that we shut down those arenas, was the effective closure date?
Which, through the Chair, March the fourteenth was the last day that the, or thirteenth, sorry, was the last day the canteens opened.
Okay, so.
At either facility.
So in fact, the revenue is up slightly with two weeks less impact.
Good job, well done. I have another one, Mr. Grant.
Go ahead.
A little concerned on our winter control, we have thirty-nine percent left.
Page reference, please, page reference?
That's page eleven of fifty-three, too.
Can't be eleven of fifty-three.
I'm just going by, or note here, that's all I'm going by.
So, so if you're, if you're looking for the numbers, that would be on page thirteen. Subtotal Public Works, it's two above winter control.
Hold one second. Subtotal Public Works, two above. So forty-two nine 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 spent, which represents forty-four percent. No, sorry.
One above that, sorry.
Hundred ninety-six, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, I got you, a hundred ninety-six, which represents, okay, percentage remaining, thirty-nine percent.
So, through, through the, through, through the Chair, what we look at with respect to winter control is, is five, five months, and we sort of break it down by twenty percent, twenty percent, twenty percent sort of thing. So, so if we're around the sixty percent spent at, at, at the end of, at the end of March or, or into April, that's, that's pretty reasonable amount. Plus, in this, in this value is the forty thousand transfer into, into that reserves.
Oh, it is, that's included in the one ninety-six?
That is included in the one ninety-six.
Oh, okay. So when you say you work on five months, you sort of figure five months of winter, winter controlling?
That, that, that is correct, we typically go January, February, March, November, December.
Okay, right, yeah.
So we're okay. So, I, I, I would say we're in much better shape. This year, as, as compared to last year, where we were, we were about ninety-one percent spent in, 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 in April.
Yeah. Fair enough.
Yeah.
Further comments, observations, go ahead.
Yeah, still, a little concerned about shop expense and fuel. Same page thirteen, three, three down, we're seventy-two percent used up already. And if the fuel's gonna go up, I would presume that we're only using one truck or one person.
Well, wait a minute, no, I read that to say seventy-two percent remaining.
Remaining.
Correct, yeah. So thirty-seven thousand used of a hundred and thirty-eight available. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I'm just concerned about with our fuel cost, I know the fuel costs have went down, but we're gonna really increase because we're taking one vehicle per person now. Which is gonna increase for sure. I would think our shop expense and fuel.
Well, it depends on how much travel they're doing.
Yeah, well, they're gonna be traveling, so.
And that's all, that's all I'm just trying to bring up a little. I, I understand the point you're making there, Counselor Hunter.
I just wonder, I wondered that myself too, too, there in figuring that, we're separating the costs over for our extra cost for COVID nineteen expenses. Can we dedicate this extra fuel cost in there, being that we are running one per truck? Is there any way of claiming?
Through the Chair, that would be very difficult to determine what value we could associate to COVID, just, you know, just because we're, you know. I don't, I don't think that there's a way to, to, to delineate that easily.
Well, to, to, to the Treasurer, we, we don't, we haven't actually taken on extra vehicles, is that what?
No.
No, so we're using the same number of vehicles. All we're doing is saying only one person in a vehicle.
Right.
Okay.
I just, I've been saying this, Counselor Dillbo, was where we sent two guys in a truck with a camper and do, now we got one guy driving that truck, another guy driving a half ton behind it, another guy maybe driving.
Backhoe.
Backhoe, behind where.
That is true.
We had just one going, now we're having to send another vehicle along all the time. We got the same number of vehicles, but we're not using them the same.
Yeah, we're not using them the same.
Using the bar.
Yeah. So, so through, through the Chair, I, I think, I, I think it would be hard to track right away, but if, if, if we monitor o, o, over a month or two, and, and we notice what, what I would consider a dramatic increase in, in vehicle expenses and fuel in, in that end of it, we could probably, you know, be able to attribute a portion to, to, to the modified operation. That, that may be able to go o, over into the COVID expenses.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Robertson, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just wondered if the tendered price for fuel was much higher than the, than the current price today? Because we had an all-time low, and, and if there's a gain in that.
But most of our, I understand that most of our fuel is not tendered by the dollar, it's, it's tendered by the relationship to what they call the rack price, but I, I just need to get some clarification someplace or not. Maybe the Treasurer?
I, I can't specifically answer that question, would have to come right from Public Works in that area, in that specific area, I'm not sure.
I think, I think our price that we pay is a, is a, is a, is defined as a relationship to the rack price.
Rack plus.
Rack plus or minus.
Up or down.
Yeah.
So possibly at December the thirty-first, or, or earlier, when the estimates, the budgets were made for two thousand and twenty, the prices certainly were higher then.
Oh, yes.
And there could be some saving.
Yeah. It's, but it all, but it's dependent on quantity, too.
Yeah.
I guess I have one more, Mr. Mayor, and I'll leave you alone. Overhead expenses.
So two hundred and two expended, all five-five-five available, sixty-three percent remaining.
I think we got into that last year, too, and maybe we should, you know, our problems with the vehicle expense, too. We should keep a real good eye on it.
Yes.
Okay. Like last year, we, we had to come and pick in some money. We should really start looking here, because that's a, that's a sign already.
So through the, through, through the Chair, with, with all due respect, our vehicle expenses, there's seventy-six percent remaining. We, we haven't spent twenty-five percent. I, I, I would say over that first quarter, that's very tight looking at, at our vehicle expenses. Overhead expenses is up slightly, because that is where the insurance comes from, and we've actually paid the twenty twenty insurance in March, where it was April in twenty nineteen that we paid. So in actual fact, if you take the insurance off, our overhead expenses are down, are less than twenty nineteen.
So go ahead, is the, is insurance a cost after COVID?
That's, that's, that's the line, that's the line item that the insurance comes out of.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Cameron, then Counselor Hunter.
Yes, while we're talking about overhead expenses, with the money that we've expended so far on the flood allotment, the bags, the sand, and whatever else, does that go into that line item of overhead expenses?
Orders of Protective Services.
Through the Chair, we believe flooding expenses are, is under that Public Works overhead.
Thank you.
And Counselor Hunter.
I just have one question through the Chair to our Recreation Director again. In, on page, where am I here? Page three. Page three under Recreation. We had, had, for the, wrong page here again. Yeah, page three of it. For a special arena we had, had last year under actual for a hundred twenty-eight thousand. And this year, we only had a hundred and ten thousand, our revenue. How come we're down so much on the special arena? Because I thought it just closed at the regular time, I didn't think they closed it any earlier, though they normally do.
But you're on the expense, you're on the expense side?
No, I'm on the revenue. I believe, you're on page fourteen of fifty-three at the bottom center? Yeah. That's, that's expenses.
Those are expenses.
That's expenses, the revenue.
On, on page twelve of fifty-three, last year's actuals was eighty-one nine, and this year's is sixty-six.
Yeah, that's the one I was looking at. Okay, on page, on page twelve. Yeah. Just to go around my expenses, we said a little, I know it's down quite a bit. We didn't close any earlier, I don't think, than we normally do, so.
Noel, that may very well, and I'll just ask the Treasurer that, because our receivables are up, and the, and the Treasurer indicated that receivables might be up a bit because of the early closures, and we hadn't got the money from the contracts yet. Is that, is that what we're seeing on the sixty-six nine seventy-five number?
That could be a timing of billing as well.
Ah, billing, yeah, okay.
That, through the Chair, that more than likely does include all of the March invoices that were submitted. So South County Minor Hockey Arena things and what have you, that figure there would not include those for the month of March, which took, it was thirteen to fourteen days for the special arena.
Basically, the only lost revenue we're basically gonna do on the arena will be on the Cardinal arena.
Well, through the Chair, through Counselor Hunter, the lost revenue at the special ring went from the fourteenth for three days, the Friday, Saturday, Sunday, basically. Was the lost revenue there?
Cardinal will be the main, Ingredients Center will be the main.
Yes.
We're gonna lose most of the ninety million dollars.
That is, that is correct.
Deputy Mayor?
So forecasting that out, I mean, taking the, the numbers and comparing them from last year with, with expenses, and to where we are this year with, with expenses, taking the two and figuring them out, we're only seven thousand down at this point, or roughly seven thousand down in, in those overall costs. If, if we expect more revenue still to come in, is it, is it fair to say that they're gonna equal out pretty close to, to not losing anything at all, because we're closed and saving money by being closed?
That's not what we have from the Treasurer.
Well, yeah, I think you're correct in, in your assumption, the only other difference between last year's March to this year's March is last year's March did not have the insurance associated with any one of those departments. And this year's money, this year's actuals have the insurance value in it, which is a fairly significant value over the entire recreational department. So I would think that seven thousand dollar difference is actually probably, we're in better shape.
We're in better shape?
Yes, because the insurance has been paid out already.
So can I continue that? So by, so am I, if, because I was trying to justify this in my head earlier, by, yes, we're gonna lose some revenues by being closed with the summer revenues, but is it fair to say that our costs are going to be actually, would have been higher than what our revenues would have been, and by being closed, we're actually gonna save some money?
I think there's gonna be some small savings with hydro for sure.
Yeah. Through the Chair, there definitely will be some savings from hydro, from building supply and maintenance, small amounts, but it would be close, it would be close.
My old mind hearing this, we're, we're pretty close to a break-even point. You know, you're saying it's better than what I had, I'll keep it at seven, but if that's the case, we're still gonna save more money, are, are we not actually ahead of budget? Then?
So through, so, so through.
Disunderstanding it?
So through the Chair, if, if, if we're talking about special villa arena, only?
I was thinking both.
Or, or thinking, you're thinking, you're thinking both. So, so I think, I think the special villa arena, it would appear like in our, in, in our response plan, it looked like the, the revenue loss in the special villa arena was, was pretty close to six thousand with the timeframe that it was, that it would have closed early.
Right.
So, so around, so around that seven thousand is not, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty close. I don't think you're gonna see much difference, like with respect to the special villa arena. But with, with, with the Cardinal arena, we're, we're looking at close to eighty-six thousand dollars in, in spring rentals that, that won't come, and we won't, we won't have a, necessarily a savings of, of eighty-six thousand. We'll have some savings with, with the, with the ice out, like our, our hydro costs will go down closer to what they would be in, in July, August timeframe. So, so we'll, we'll probably be maybe in a little better position overall by the, by that end of May kind of item with respect to the arenas.
Well, I saw, I saw somewhere a ninety-six thousand dollar shortfall in revenue. Can't remember where it was in the briefing notes, but.
That's part, that's part of the response plan.
Part of the response.
Okay, all right.
I'll continue on with the response.
Okay, so are there any other questions with this first quarter budget variance report?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I go back to page twelve, and I can't get my head around the very first line. Taxation revenue, five point nine million is the budget. And we've actual received to date five point six. So we have ninety-five percent of our tax revenues collected already?
Well, I think that budget number is the budget number for the first payment, is it not?
Not, not according, not according to page one of the final budget report on the second of the third, twenty twenty.
I just lost you there for a second.
Well, I have, I'm looking at my budget book. The taxation budget is five point nine four eight, exactly, the same number as in this report.
As for, for a total year revenue?
Yes.
Okay, so you're saying that that five nine forty-eight is total year, is budgeted total year revenue?
Or taxation revenue?
Taxation revenue?
Yeah, no granite glue and all that, it's just simple taxation.
Okay, and, and so that's the number that we see on page twelve?
That's correct.
And we're showing year-to-date actual is five point six, making it look as though we're, we've collected ninety-five percent.
That'd be correct.
So discrepancy there someplace?
Through the Chair, I'll reiterate this, last year, at the same time, we had the same conversation. The system bills the fifty percent of last year's total, county, education, and municipal. There is no method for which I can show on this report just our portion.
On this report?
On this particular report, it, it codes the whole amount of the billing into current tax revenue. It isn't until we do the final billing in August where that number gets divided, and we actually see where the rates are, and we actually see our own portion only showing up in that spot.
So do you understand what we're being told, Mr. Bradley?
Well, let me just see if I do. The Treasurer's indicating that the system, computer system, takes the budget and takes the amount we've got and does some kind of a proration or multiplication or whatever to arrive at. The five point six, in other words, the five point six is a computer-generated number?
Correct, it's, five point six is basically all the levies. It's fifty percent of all of twenty. It's fifty percent of all of twenty nineteen's levies. So if we had levied, excuse me, eleven million and whatever um in twenty nineteen for all the different levies, then this is fifty percent of that.
So I'm talking about the twenty twenty year-to-date actual.
We can't do it twenty twenty year-to-date actual for just our portion of the levy until after the August billing.
So this is not really a actual, it's a forecasted number.
No, so 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 the five, so the five point six million year-to-date actual includes the our municipal, the county municipal, and the school board portion.
All three.
All three are included in that five point six.
The five point nine?
But they're not actual.
Yeah, they are. Actual cash received.
Actual billing.
Yes.
Well, are you only gonna get five point nine for the whole year?
No, so so our municipal portion would only be what, fifty-five percent of that? So if you take fifty-five percent of that five point six eight one, that would be what our municipal portion is that we've received in revenue.
So what's the five point nine over in the budget? That's municipal portion only?
Five point nine.
Yes, the five point nine is the municipal portion only.
So it's literally misleading type of, uh, I can't take it as face value.
It's it's a, it's a limitation of the system.
Well, then you've got a new premium system.
Well, the problem is that that's not quite so easy to do. Because if you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but these reports lead us to make decisions.
Yes, you're right.
If the information isn't correct, the decision won't be correct.
That is right. But uh, but.
Like I say, it'd be better to throw that thing out, buy a system that'll do it correctly.
But go back to the twenty nineteen year-to-date actual.
Yes.
The twenty nineteen year-to-date actual is the municipal number only.
Okay, that's the one, that's the one that we can use to operate the township.
Yeah, the the place where.
Let me finish, because the five point five in the nineteen column is the money that we have had available. Look, I'll pass history on. That's the money that we had available to operate the township from that part of the budget. The five point nine is also the money that we should have available to operate the township for that particular line on the budget. The five point six is not that. It's a different thing.
Yeah.
Well, the, in in, you know, with with all.
So what goes wrong, so what I'm saying is that from a policymaking, planning, decision point of view, it's misleading.
Yep, that's correct. He is right. It's bad information. It's, doesn't matter how you cut the cake, it's bad information.
Exactly. So, so unfortunately, if the system is locked in like that and we locked in the system by spending a ton of money on it, I guess we have to live with it, but it should be, is there no way to look at what the portion is for? Even if you have to calculate it manually, can't take that long. You know how much money you've got in in the, in March thirty-first? And forget COVID for the time being, because that has an implication. But, you know, you shouldn't be able to say, well, I got that much money in the, by the thirty-first of August, it's a one-line calc company. We put it in the bank.
Can I interrupt just a second?
Okay, treasurer wants in here.
The number that you're seeing there is what was billed. It's not actually the money that we have received. We have a receivable over two million dollars.
Yes, I understand that.
These are two different reports. One is revenue and expenditure and we, that taxation revenue number will come out to be the exact same number at the end of the year.
Yeah, I understand that, but why do I have to wait for the next policy decisions in the next twelve months or eight months?
You know that that money is guaranteed. That's all I'm telling you. The taxation revenue is, is guaranteed. It's billed and it will, may not be received, but it's, it's billed as part of your budget. It's a guaranteed number.
Billing it doesn't make me, but.
Yeah, but that's.
Okay, forget about it.
Well, yeah, but that comes back to the point that I made earlier. Just because you bill it, and even after the end of the year, you carry it as a receivable, does not mean that at some point in the future, you're not gonna have to do a write-off of it. I mean, that's just the reality. No, I mean, you don't do the write-off. You have to try to, in some, I mean, the other mechanism that we have to collect it is obviously to take the properties and put them up for tax sale. So I see what you're saying in the sense that you're guaranteed that money.
Yeah.
You're guaranteed that money at some point in the future, even if it may be three years from now as a result of a tax sale.
We recognize it as revenue in the year in which we bill it.
We recognize it as revenue in the year in which we bill it.
Like every other revenue source.
And so the, so the, what we're seeing under twenty twenty year-to-date actual, that is what has been billed?
It was billed in the March billing, yes.
Yes, that's the March billing.
Okay, so.
But, but.
The point of, the point of thinking, Mr. Mayor, is that, that if that number isn't sort of a hard number, and I understand what the treasurer's saying, if that number is not a hard number, and then we run down all of the following stuff in the rest of the report and in our budget book and so on, the different expenses and revenues and so on, if we, if we find out that that number up at the top isn't close to what we think it should be because of of factors which, you know, we are undeterminable at this point in time, our expenses, we're gonna go merrily along spending money that is never gonna show up.
Yeah, yeah, well, then, and the.
And especially in this year where we've got this virus condition. Because we can anticipate that, we can bill all the tax which we want, but now we've delayed it to May thirty-first. And if we, and this is not gonna be over, so we're gonna probably be faced with delaying the next one. And and even if they lift the regulations to some degree, we're probably gonna miss the revenue target significantly. And so we need to at least be thinking about how are we gonna adjust these areas blindly in our expense side of the picture so that we can come to a balance, which we don't, legally have to balance divided.
Yes, but the, what the treasurer is saying to us is that once we bill it, we're entitled, we're entitled to count it as received because we have the mechanisms to receive it. The problem is, it doesn't become a budget problem, it becomes a cash flow problem. And that's where, that's where, we're, that's, that's the issue that we're gonna be dealing with. Do we or do we not have a cash flow problem? Uh, the treasurer is telling us we don't have a budget problem. I see the argument there.
Yeah, I can understand the difference between those two terminologies.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, so I'm I'm just pointing out that, you know, we get off on the wrong foot if we're not careful.
Yeah, no, the, then the, that opens up the larger discussion that I was referring to earlier when I, when I first talked about this. How do we prevent or circumvent a potential cash flow problem? And I, and I saw someplace in the, in the report that we're gonna deal with shortly that the treasurer is going to be preparing some sort of a report. And and when we get to that point, I'm gonna be asking that specific question. But at least for this point in time, we've, we've clarified the type of problem that that we're talking about.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's in the COVID report. I guess we can wait till we get to that one, but we're, we have to think about, we've got some serious thinking to do here.
Okay, so one uh final thing before we move on to the treasurer. And I'm going back uh to the twenty twenty year-to-date column that we've just been discussing and the five point six eight one number, which represents the billing of all three, the interim billing of all three.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is it not possible as a side note to break out and perhaps in the margin tell us what the M portion of that is compared with the C portion and the E portion? Uh, is it, is it possible to give us a, a side note?
Not on this particular report. I can certainly embed it in the information item above. But not out of this report is generated from the system. There's no method.
Okay, but um, but other places, uh, and I guess, let me just go back here a second. Didn't I see, I mean, and it's not to do, I, I think, with what you're telling me. Uh, on the previous report, the side notes seem to be, uh, you seem to have constructed the side notes.
Yes, because that particular report is an Excel spreadsheet.
Oh, okay, all right. So they're coming from two different sources?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So do you, do you understand what I've asked and what I've been told? Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, to the treasurer, is there, with software upgrades and with changes to systems, is there a way to get this? This seems to be an ongoing issue and and if, if it's coming back every year, is there, is there a you're using an Excel spreadsheet and you're using a different one and they're, you know, not working out well for everybody, is there a way in one piece of software that with our modernization dollars, when this is all done, that we can find a solution so that this conversation doesn't happen every year and we can get past it?
To, to truthfully, the amount that's billed and the way that it gets, I've even asked this of our, of our current software provider if there was any way that um when we bill that it would code just the municipal portion to, to a, a specific line item. They all tell me, even besides the current provider, that there is no method in any one of the accounting systems to actually do that. It builds, it builds to one line item and one line item only.
Serious.
And when you get to the, uh, because it's fifty percent of last year's billing, it just populates and it says, so for instance, if your taxes in total were twelve hundred dollars, it's going to bill you five hundred dollars. And so that it doesn't apportion it to the school board, the county, because the percentages are different every year for each of the, the things, right? I might, the township may budget uh and tax for fifty-seven percent of the overall tax and last year we only budgeted, we only took fifty-five percent of that overall tax. So it can't differentiate.
Doesn't differentiate.
It will not differentiate that first billing. Once we input all the taxes and we input the percentages for each of the um school boards, then in the August bill, it can, it can make all that.
Oh.
It'll reconcile.
It can all reconcile.
Okay, it's because it's an interim billing.
Because it's an interim billing and we're only basically billing fifty percent of last year's amount. And it doesn't say fifty percent of last year's amount is, you know, fifty-five percent for this. It can't, it can't make that dimin- diminution.
So just a reminder, because you're working with it every day and and we're not, and we've got good memories, but they're short. If you can remind us of that in the briefing note.
Well, it'll show the same in June.
Yeah, yeah.
Until I get to August.
Yeah.
In the August one, you'll see. But I can assure you that that number will be that number after the end of August.
Yeah.
Because we bill it based on like specific numbers.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thanks, man. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions with this report before I move on? Good discussion. Gets our memories going again. All right, so I'm moving on then uh to item number seven C, which is the vacant and abandoned buildings policy update. So we have now in front of us uh the final draft of this um, of this new policy. And uh, the, the briefing note indicates that the changes that we had asked for uh have been included in this draft. Um, but I wonder if now we all understand, there's a, there's a few, uh, I'll, I'm not gonna take the time to point them out here. There's a few little um spelling errors and and mechanical errors that we correct, but I wonder if everybody is understanding how this bylaw is going to work. And the reason that I say that is that if you look very carefully at the wording of this bylaw, nothing happens until, and I'm on the second page of the bylaw, at clause two point four sub C. And if you look at two point four sub C, nothing happens until an inspector issues an order. So that puts the onus on us to find the vacant building and issue the order. And I missed that on the first round because my question would have been, is the onus not on the owner of the vacant building to come in and request the permit? The answer is no. The onus is on us to issue an order and tell them that they have to come in and obtain a permit. So does everybody understand that?
If someone makes a complaint, then the inspector will know. That's, that's where, that's where it begins.
Just one question, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Council, Councilor Cameron's got one on the table here first.
Okay.
Let's deal with his.
No, I was just, Mr. Mayor, all I was doing was clarifying that someone has to make a identification, for the lack of a better word, of a property. Forward that information to the inspector and then it carries on from there.
Well, that's the way I'm reading.
Yes.
Now, that means that. So. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, so you're saying that if I had a vacant building, I could let it be vacant, do whatever I want? It's not up, I'm not obligated to come in and get a building permit or a vacant permit?
No, you're not, not under this bylaw.
So I can just let it go unless we complain or someone complains? That's what the act takes when, when the, when our inspector goes in and issues him?
Yep.
Okay.
So that, so he has to go out and issue the order and then within thirty days of him issuing the order, you're gonna have to put two million dollars in liability of insurance and you're gonna have to obtain the permit. No, I'm sorry, Mr. Bradley, when you're not sitting in front of me, I forgot that you're next here on the questions.
Okay, the, the question is relative to section C. The thirty-day requirement and an order by the, an issuance of an order by the inspector, then the two billion dollar liability uh to get the, the, the permit, does he have to prove that he's got the two million?
That's the way I'm reading section. So, Mr. Bradley.
Who has the liability up to the point of this thirty-day and uh, the day of obtaining the permit? Who, who has the liability?
Hang on just one second. So I'll deal, the, the, it's a two-part question. I'm gonna deal with it one part at a time. So the first part is, yes, he has to produce proof of insurance in the amount of two million liability before he can obtain the vacant and abandoned permit. That's the first part of the question. Now, the second part of the question was, where's the, where's the liability insurance prior to that? The, the, the bylaw is silent on that, as I understand it. Which means that.
They could place it anywhere else.
Yeah, which means that Councilor Dillabod doesn't have to have any insurance at all on his empty house.
If, if somebody decides to sue Councilor Dillabod and vacant building, they're gonna sue everybody, including the garbage truck driver and the township and everybody.
Well, in, in the case of a fire or uh something that occurs in what we might call a derelict building, I think that that is the whole purpose of this bylaw. The whole purpose of this bylaw is to pu- put ourselves in a position where we're not the ones at fault here. That, that the, that, that, that we have a mechanism, that we have a mechanism to bring the owner of that vacant building, that abandoned building, into compliance with a bylaw. The problem is, is that the onus is on us to find him and order him to do thus and thus. But that's the way it's written and I'm assuming, uh, just to, to declare, I'm assuming that we've run this by, uh, legal counsel and for some reason the onus rests with us, not with the owner of the building.
There's nothing within the bylaw stating specifically that an owner of a vacant building can't willingly come to us and say, our building is vacant, we want to apply.
Oh, yes. Nothing prevents that.
Exactly. But we can't go out and say, you know, every single person within the township, you know, if you have a vacant building, come running to us, because they're not going to.
Well, what, well.
We can issue a statement through the building official or through the bylaw stating that if you do, this is what's going to come.
Yes.
So there's that. And this bylaw has been run through quite a few different municipalities as well as I have sent a draft off to our lawyers. They haven't responded back with any comments, so I take that as they not having any issues at this point.
Well, except for one thing, the, the, the lawyers may not understand the, the major issue here. When the lawyers read this, they may very well assume, okay, well, the province, the municipality wants to be the enforcer here. They're not writing this bylaw in such a manner that the owner of the vacant building has to be proactive and come in and ask for the permit. And there's a, 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 a major distinction in how this bylaw, uh, comes into effect, how it, how it comes into force. Now, um, I'm looking for other discussion here because I don't wanna get tied down on that one specific issue, but that is a major issue for me.
I'm just thinking back to, um, when Counselor Cameron brought, brought this forward, what the spirit of, of him bringing it forward was, and I think it was the identification of, uh, in my mind, the identification of, uh, derelict and abandoned buildings and, and the want and the need, uh, to do something, uh, for it. So for me, the way that the bylaw is written, it, it seems like that is in the spirit. If we're going to, if we're going to notice and, and recognize that there's a, a, an abandoned or a derelict building, uh, then we issue an order to, to the owner of that property. It, it, to me, it's, it's written to, to what the original spirit of, of that suggestion was, or at least the way that I, the way that I think about it or the way that I see it.
See, and I'm interpreting it just the opposite because I think.
You're, you're very correct. And this also too is where the neighbor has the opportunity now to make the complaint.
Sure. Yeah, that's the way I see it too.
And, and, and as you, and as you recall, at our, at, when we first discussed this, I had mentioned that, that, that it looked like a, um, a complaint-driven, uh, bylaw, which basically it is.
Yes, oh, totally.
It is, you know? So that means that we're relying on certain people to identify these buildings, whether it be a member of council or whether it be a neighbor or, or, or something. At least now, we're on the path to being able to get those, get those, um, in order one, one, one way or the other. Um, but I don't see where the township would be actually liable if somebody doesn't put insurance, if an owner does not put insurance on their building.
Well, no, as Mr. Bradley has pointed out a minute ago, i- i- in the case of abandoned building and, um.
He may have walked away from it.
Yes. So let's take the case of an abandoned building where the kids get into it and a fire results and one of the kids doesn't get out on time. All right, there's absolutely no question that the parents will sue the township. There's just no question at all. And they will sue if the owner of the building. But remember, under joint several liability, if the township is found to be one percent responsible for that abandoned building not having been properly boarded up, we, we bear, we bear the full brunt of the, of the lawsuit, of the award of the lawsuit. Assuming that they can't find the building owner, the building owner is, uh, is bankrupt or disappeared or we can't find him, we bear the full responsibility.
And we've done that in the past.
Yeah, we have.
Yes. And this gives us the mechanism.
And, yeah. Now, the other side of things is that I, I was, I would, the reason that I would like this, I don't, I'm not, I don't wanna hold this up at all. I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring vote in favor of this when it comes before council. If the, if the sta- if the committee here today recommends that this go to council, I'm for sure gonna vote for it. But I was hoping that the bylaw would be written in such a way that we could advertise to our, to our property owners that if you're a property owner and you've got an abandoned building, you better get in and get a, a, a permit. Because if you don't, and we find out about your abandoned building and we issue an order, the permit's gonna be three times the amount it was if you'd come in and ask in the first place.
Is that something we could do by putting it on the website?
Well, no, we can't because it not requires a change to the bylaw.
If, 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 if I may, I, I don't, I don't think you can read two point four C without, without reading all of two.
Go ahead.
So it, it tells, it tells me two point one that every owner of a building in the township shall maintain the building in accordance with the provisions and requirements of this bylaw.
Which they don't.
No person shall allow a building to stand vacant or, and/or abandoned for more than a hundred and twenty consecutive days unless the building is in compliance with section two point four of this bylaw. So it's putting the onus on the owner to maintain that building in compliance. Two point four C is if they don't and we make a, we make an inspection and we issue an order, then thirty days from that time, in addition, we wanna make sure that you have, uh, liability insurance.
There's no, there's still no res- there's still no reason for me to, my building's been empty for a year and a half. There's still no reason for me to come in and get a permit.
But, 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 but also on the same token, how do we, how does the township automatically assume that that building i- is deemed vacant?
Oh, come on. I can show you a dozen of them. I can show you a dozen of them. I can show, I just didn't, I can show you a dozen just on Cardinal Island. Seriously. That, but anyway, let's not hold this up. Let's get this bylaw before council. Uh, let's just drop this issue right now. We understand the implications of it. Um, and, uh, we, and, uh, we definitely wanna put something in place. Counselor Hunter?
I agree with C A, C A O. I think the bylaw is writ- written, the one that says on the owner to come in, in, in and get it, you're supposed to abide by it. We're gonna have, uh, reports from, as Counselor Cameron said, neighbors and stuff that want something done. We have a bylaw enforcement officer that feeds out doing something else. He has the power to let him see the building. He can issue a, an order to them. And we got one catch in there of the two million liability. There's abandoned buildings in this township that are way off the grid, that are abandoned. But they're never gonna be able to get a two million dollar liability insurance on them. Because there isn't gonna be an insurance company in the country going to give them one.
And then what's gonna happen?
Then what are we doing? If they can't get it and they can't abide by it, they're gonna, gonna get ticketed for it. They're gonna have to pay, pay for not having it. The onu- oni- onus is that it'll have to be demolished.
And what's your solution to bring, to make that happen?
Well, just that if, if they can't, can't receive and if there's a complaint and they can't receive, prove that they can get liability insurance on it. And there, there needs to be a clause that has to be brought up date to a certain time or if it can't be, it has to be demolished.
That's not here. It's not in court. That's not included here. There's, there's no, there's no provision in this bylaw to deal with the person who fails to comply, that I can see.
Should there be?
Well, I mean, you gotta decide. Either the bylaw has teeth or it doesn't. Do you mean either it has teeth or it doesn't?
I think the bylaw has teeth once the complaint has been, has been made.
No, because Counselor Hunter has just pointed out to you a complete loophole. I can't get the two million dollar liability insurance.
Okay.
So I'm not getting a permit.
If you don't get.
You got a solution for me?
I think there is a solution here.
Okay, well, let's see if the clerk's got one first.
So you're referring to all that issues of order under section seven. There are provisions that the person must comply and remedy the situation within fourteen business days.
Or?
And if the owner fails to comply, the ti- the township may without further, further notice proceed to carry out work required at the cost of such work may be added to the taxes. So the building official would determine what that work would be, whether it be demolish it, well, whatever. I, I don't know what else he would do based on the situation, but that may wa- be one option. And then it would be, that the problem would be solved.
That's a simple one, two D, is that right?
Correct.
So, so the compliance section is section seven?
Yes.
All right, so look at section seven. And, and, and the, and the teeth of section seven comes in seven point two D. And seven point two D, the teeth, the only teeth that we have, if the owner or the occupant fails to comply with the order, the township may without further notice, now, the township. Now theoretically, that means the council, so you have to go through a process. The township may, or we could delegate that, we could delegate that authority to the bylaw enforcement officer, may without further notice, proceed to carry out the work required and the cost of such work will be added to the taxes of the property and the owner or the occupant or both may be sub- may be subject to prosecution for defense. So my building isn't worth two nickels and I know it. I can't get the insurance and, and I'm sure as heck not, and I, I, I'm sure as heck not gonna go the expense of demolishing it because that's gonna cost me money.
But I don't think, because you can't get insurance, Mr. Mayor, I don't think your building would be on Main Street.
No, that's.
Your, your building may be stuck in the back forty somewhere where probably nobody's gonna see it anymore.
Yeah, but that's a good law.
You gotta remember what the intent for this whole thing was. The intent was basically in residential buildup areas to do something with the.
Vacant buildings.
Vacant buildings.
Yep. That's why I say, let's get this done.
And I think that under chapter gives us authority because the bylaw enforcement officer had, had the right. It's on Main Street and somebody's complaining about it, he's gonna say you need this and this and this done to bring that up to compliance. They're probably gonna do it. If it's in the back forty, as you said, and they can't get liability insurance on it and they've been a complaint about it, the bylaw officer's gonna look at it, the building inspector's gonna say, well, it's not worth fixing, so your compliance is to demolish it. And if you demolish it or the township was in bar equipment, we demolish it and we bill you for the cost of demolish it because you're still on the tax, tax roll.
Yep.
And the property's still, if it's on property, it's still gonna be a lot, gonna be a saleable lot regardless of we're probably gonna get our money out of it and whoever owns it probably gonna say, well, I guess I better pay the demolition fee because the lot's worth a lot more than what it's gonna cost to demolish that house.
Yeah. Okay, let's get this, any other questions here? Okay, so now what we need here of this discussion?
There's no recommendation.
Uh, well, I know, but I'm prepared, uh, I'm prepared to entertain a motion that this be, uh, brought to council for a third reading on, uh, the twenty-seventh of April.
I'd make that motion.
Moved by Counselor Hunter and seconded by Counselor Cameron, or Counselor Dillabod. Those in favor? All right, so this is gonna come before council for third reading on the twenty-seventh of April. All right, now I'm at seven D, garbage bags. And I don't know if any other counselors have had any, uh, uh, requests for relief from garbage bag costs. I think I've had one and the, and the C A O tells me that they're hooked in others. Is that correct, Mr. C A O?
Through, through, through the chair, we, we've had a couple of lawyers with respect to that.
I've had one which I forwarded on, which, which started this, actually started this whole, whole, whole process.
Case.
And I ju- I'd just like to say, uh, while, while we're on, on, uh, the basic, the basic original, uh, request was for discussion items tha- the night of. Uh, and it, and it came down here. The, at the night of, I was, I, I will, I will tell you that I was not in favor of free garbage bags. However, staff has done a wonderful job here by coming up with a purpose and, and way where the true people that need the relief can get it. And that's, and that's through the, uh, and that's through the, uh, through the, the food bank. And, um, I, I, I do like that, uh, like the, the way it's written up and I do like the, uh, and I do like the recommendation. It, it takes, it takes a load off, um, well, on my mind, that we can touch the people that really do need the relief in, in this case and not just a blanket.
Now, how much do you like the recommendation?
Well.
Enough to move the recommendation?
Yeah, I would do that. Yes, I would move that, Mr. Mayor.
He has a mo- I have a mover for the recommendation.
Second.
So, Mr. Mayor, it's on the table.
Yes, it is. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Can I jump in, Mr. Mayor?
Certainly.
I've been there on the briefing note, the permit. Does it need one free bag per week to each household, a ten day food bank during the nineteen pandemic? My thinking is it's too open-ended. I mean, maybe we could consider some kind of a date certain and then before that date certain, we can review it again and see whether it needs to be extended. It's just that the pandemic, you could define my law for three years. Remember eighteen nineteen, it started in seventeen? And, uh, so why not for like two years? Who knows about this one?
Okay, now, what about, um?
If we just added the words, uh, to be reviewed, uh, blind, um, say every two months?
Well, uh, I, I don't want us to have to keep coming back.
Uh, if, if, if I, if I may, Mr. Chair, we could just add, um, until one month after the emergency orders have been lifted?
How old that was?
That would be probably acceptable.
Some, some, something, something along those lines?
After the provincial municipal order has been lifted?
After the provincial emergency orders have been lifted.
Okay, we're, I'm gonna add that little phrase, or until one month after the provincial emergency order has been lifted. Now, are the mover and the secondar prepared to accept that as a friendly amendment?
We are.
You are?
I am.
Yeah, I am.
Um, the other thing that I might add before we shut this down is what about the alternative? My preference would be to follow the from set outlined in the alternative.
Now, what's that?
Well, this is backside of that page, page two.
Yes.
Um, to donate a block of garbage bags with a food bank for distribution to those individuals who utilize the food bank.
Isn't that what?
In other words, the other method is. In other words, in other words, the other method is, uh, involved with vendors and so on.
Well, I thought the two were pretty much the same. The recommendation is to eat, one bag, one bag per week to each household attending the food bank, and I don't see a great deal of difference between that and the alternative that you just mentioned.
Well.
If, if, if I may, through the chair, for, for clarity, um, I, I, I was under a bit of a timeline, and, and, and as it turns out, the, uh, the, the alternative should have been the financial considerations, and, and then the alternative should have been the, the portion of the financial considerations. We're recommending the alternative.
Uh, well, I got a recommendation right here in front of me, which is, oh, you're rec, you're recommending the alternative.
Yes, I am. I, 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 I switched those two up in my.
Okay, so everybody understands the recommendations on the table?
Because the food bank monitors who's coming in.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah.
They have to meet certain qualifications.
Right, yeah. Councillor Hunter, you wanted in here?
Well, I just, under the alternative of that's a recommendation right there, I have one problem with it, I don't think if the staff of the food bank's gonna look after it, I don't think we need a staff member there handing out the bags. Costs more for the staff member than the bags, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, my goodness.
Because you gotta, gotta look at the point, point here. I think the consensus of the people, they're looking at this, they're looking at the Cardinal distribution of, of the food bank. We got one in Spencerville, we got one in Prescott, there's a lot of people from Edwardsburg Cardinal that pick up their food in Prescott. We only got, I think, fifteen to twenty in Spencerville. I think there's in the neighborhood of thirty to forty in Prescott.
Edward'sburg Cardinal residents? And then I don't know what the number would be at Cardinal.
I don't know, Cardinal's the biggest one for us, but we're not just one, one location here, if you're giving, you're gonna have to have bags in all three, three spots if you're gonna give the people from from Edwardsburg Cardinal that are receiving them. The food banks gotta define that they are Edwardsburg Cardinal.
Okay, excuse me, Mr. Bradley, councillor Hunter was speaking here, sorry.
I said then the food banks have gotta define that this is Edwardsburg Cardinal, that's picking my bags up.
That's easy. Okay, so councillor Hunter is pointing out that there are three different locations where residents of Edwardsburg Cardinal may attend it, may attend. And he's suggesting that if we're going to have them available in the Spencerville location and in the Cardinal location, we probably also should have them available in the Prescott location, because there are quite a number of Edwardsburg Cardinal residents who attend the Prescott food bank, the location in Prescott. So.
How do you control that?
Okay, well, just, that's the issue now, so just let me see if I can clarify this somehow. Um, I think the recommendation that we have in front of us, uh, I, I think the concept of the recommendation is one free garbage bag per week to each TWPEC household attending the food bank during the current pandemic situation. That's the intent. And now I don't think the way the recommendation is written that it implies that we're gonna have somebody there handing them out. I think the intent is that we will provide a number of bags at each one of those locations.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just jump in here. What, what I've just heard from councillor Hunter somewhat disturbs me, there are, which I'm, which I'm thinking here along these lines, that people from, let's, let's say the village of Cardinal or Spencerville are going to Prescott instead of utilizing the food banks locally?
Well, you have what people, people that live closer to Prescott than they do Spencerville or Cardinal.
Yeah, like.
You got people in Lockford, area, Johnstown area.
Yeah, alright.
Yeah.
Cedar Grove Road area, and that, but it's far closer, and they probably have people that work in Prescott that give them a ride in, that they can pick their food up at the back. Although these people at food bank don't have transportation.
You see, the intent, the, the intent of this is for the people that need it. And, I mean, if people can go to, I'm assuming, drive to Prescott, they can, I think they can afford their own, their own garbage bag.
No, but a lot of them don't, as councillor Hunter points out.
I, 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 I realize that now.
So why can't we just go twenty bags at each location? And let them decide when we need it?
I, I think.
They're gonna, they're gonna police it anyways.
They've gotta.
With their address.
I'd be awfully surprised if they didn't know, each of those food banks didn't know who they were serving, what municipality.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Bradley, you're on.
Okay, the Edwardsburg Cardinal bag is unique. The garbage trucks in Prescott pick up different bags. When their garbage is, it's not an EC bag. You know, it's not marked EC or anything else. It's a different bag. So, so I don't see a problem with simply giving coordinate with Barney, how many people does she, they should have on a regular basis and give her enough that goes any bags?
Mm-hmm, yes, yes, the question is how detailed do we want this recommendation? I think, I think we get the impression, uh, we get the, I think we get the job done by just doing it this way. That, that committee recommends that council donate one free garbage bag per week to each TWEC household attending the food bank during the current pandemic situation, or until one month after the provincial emergency order has been lifted. Now, all, the, the, the people are, that attend the food bank are all registered, the people running the food bank know exactly where they live, where they're from, and I'm sure that we can depend on them to do the proper administration here.
I agree.
Yes. Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
I agree.
Yes.
I just have one question, through, and I'm all in favor of passing this motion, but have we talked to the food bank, are they willing to do this?
Oh, I'm sure they will. I'm sure.
Yeah.
I, I, have we talked to them?
I have, I've talked to John Chubin.
Oh, you've talked to him?
I have, yes.
So they all knew this?
Yeah.
Alright, I'm about to call the question on the recommendation as moved by councillor Cameron, seconded by councillor Dilavah with a couple of amendments. And we've heard it, uh, uh, read out in its entirety a couple of times. Further discussion, if any? Hearing none, about to call a question, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is ready. How did you vote, Mr. Bradley?
I agree.
Oh, well, that's good to know.
Thanks, Jack.
Alright, now we're at item number seven E, which is COVID, COVID-nineteen initial response plan. Now, the interesting thing here is that the briefing note that I have in front of me doesn't have the word initial in front of the response plan, it has a response plan. So, we're going to start with this one, and, uh.
The overview of this report.
Yes, uh, I'm gonna go through this, uh, plan, and, and before I start, let me first of all say that, uh, I wanna commend the, the, uh, senior management team for putting forward such a comprehensive plan. I mean, I can see where all of the members of the senior management team have taken contribu-, contributory, uh, uh, actions here, and each of them have contributed a section, and, uh, when you read through the plan in its entirety, uh, it's pretty comprehensive, but what I am going to do is I am gonna go through it sort of section by section, because as good as the plan is, uh, uh, and as much as the plan attempts to protect the township and make sure that we move forward, uh, to continue to provide services, there are a few things that I would like to see reinstituted in the normal course, well, we're not normal course of business, but in the course of business. So, I'm gonna go through almost section by section. So on page thirty-one, um, the summary of actions taken, I note that there's twenty-some actions there that have been taken by the township as of this point in time to kind of mitigate the situation that we're in. And then on the top of page thirty-two, the significant thing that I find there is that in the second paragraph, "Department managers reviewed the 2020 capital project list and have placed the following projects on hold until May thirty-first, at which time they will be revisited." Now, only council has the power to change its budget, but staff certainly has the power to put things on hold. But I think, uh, I would like to see something a little bit stronger here, and I think what I'd like to see is I'd like to see a councillor bring forward a resolution which would defer these four projects to a date certain to be approved by council. And I'm saying that because only council has the power to change the budget. And, uh, I appreciate the, the staff recommendation to place them on hold till May thirty-first, but that just means they have to come back on May thirty-first, and I'm not sure that we'll be wanting to deal with this issue two or three times. I would prefer to deal with it just one more time, and that's when we finally say, okay, go ahead. Uh, one and two are approved, but three and four are not, or some combination thereof. So I need some discussion on that item. Tell Deputy Mayor.
Um, uh, yes, to most of what you said, just thinking though that uh, until we actually know how much we're going to, going to need to possibly defer for the year, uh, that seems to be a good start, but, but I, you know, I believe that, that it could be, uh, there could be even, you know, deeper deferrals than that, uh, going into, to next year, you know, looking at things. I, I wouldn't be a, a fan of deferring any, you know, repairs to infrastructure, that sort of stuff, but anything new or, or added as extras this year, um, uh, you know, the lights in the arena, that sort of stuff, uh, and, and really certainly would like to relook at any of the new equipment purchases that we have going forward as well.
Okay, so I'm gonna suggest the following. Would you be responsible for bringing forward a motion uh, which would defer the issues that you list in your motion to a date unknown to be approved by council? And when you bring the motion forward, if you see two or three or four others, put them in the motion and we'll discuss them at that time.
Sure, I'd be happy to draw that.
Okay, so I, that's one way of dealing with that, and then you can discuss with staff if you can find one or two others that they, I, I'm, I'm sharing your concern, I'm, I'm thinking we're gonna have to cut deeper than a hundred and fifty-one, but I wanna keep an open mind on that.
So if I, if I, if I may, through, through the chair, certainly the thought wasn't that, um, a hundred and fifty thousand's gonna be enough, that was just a, a, a quick initial.
Yep.
Glance.
Yep.
And, and once we, once we can get sort of, uh, a, a reasonable cash flow analysis basis together, we, we, we're, we're anticipating our, uh, our, our problem areas are going to be August, September, October, November.
Right.
When, when, when a number of the big capital projects, you know, which usually are, are typical large outflows. So, uh, mo-, most of these projects were under the fifty thousand mark, because anything above fifty thousand, that's going to come for, for council approval on an individual basis, and, and that analysis can, can, can be done at that stage as well.
Okay, so, it's two weeks till the next, till councillor, till deputy mayor brings his motion forward, and if you and, and deputy mayor can work on that issue and decide, uh, it, it may be part of that motion that these projects, which, which are over fifty thousand, will not come before council until this time or something like that. That gets us around that one. Now, what we know now, the provincial school board June levy payments have been deferred to September, September levy payments deferred to December, so this is going to help our cash flow problem. Uh, we know we're gonna have the same, uh, values, um, assessment values for 2021. Now, just let me clarify with the treasurer. Uh, to, so to the treasurer, are we still gonna be getting our supplemental assessments during the year?
Uh, through the chair, yes, I've been advised by impact that they are continuing to do any new builds that have been, that are in the system right now. It will, that will dry up, because of course the order right now is no new residential builds, other than the ones that have been issued thus far. But there is still supplementary, uh, I think the first one's supposed to come this month. So we will get supplementary building.
But I'm thinking, for example, there's a new build right here in Spencerville.
It will continue.
And it will continue.
Yeah.
And theoretically, we'll get a supplementary on that when that building gets an occupancy permit.
Correct.
Yes, okay. Alright, so what we will see is our supplementaries, uh, in, uh, the supplementaries will increase our overall assessment, uh, a little bit, but there will be no phase in this year. Right?
For 2021, it'll be.
For 2021, there'll be no phase in. Alright, uh, there is a leniency granted with requests for, uh, reconsiderations and appeals. These have been extended until fifteen days after the province lifts the emergency order. Spring booking revenue loss. The ingredient center eighty-five thousand, Spencerville Arena six, other facilities roughly one point seven, one, one million, one thousand seven hundred. So there's where I got my revenue losses from, ninety-three thousand. Tax receivable as of March the thirty-first are two million five. So now to the treasurer, um, these hundred and eighteen, uh, payments, these are just from April the first to April the seventh, then, right?
That is correct.
So those are people that missed the March the thirty-first deadline but decided to pay anyway.
That is correct, yeah.
Only represents a hundred and ten thousand of, of the two point five, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that leaves us at about two million five forty. And those are mostly the big commercial boys that took advantage?
Um, no, um, part of that two point five, or now two point four, uh, is still uh, individuals that are on PAP, we, we receive about a hundred and forty-six thousand a month on pre-authorized, so.
Per month?
Per month. Um, so there is some of that, for sure, um. But yeah, there is, there's, uh, there's quite a bit, there's, like I said in the one report previously, there's about just over eight hundred thousand dollars of commercial and industrial partners who, who are, are sitting as part of that two, two point four.
Now, uh, have you had, I'm just looking to try to get a feel for your experiences. Have you had any of your pre-authorized that have said, uh, we wanna withdraw our authorizations?
I have not seen that yet, no.
Yeah, I haven't seen it.
That's great.
Okay, so that means, and, uh, and the second part of that question. After we made the decision to defer to, um, May the thirty-first, we put a big push on for people to come in and, and get payment plans in place. Were there a, a number of payment, new payment plans that came into being?
There were before the, uh, before we actually made that official, um, but since that, uh, extension was, uh, was added, uh, there's less coming through. I'd have to check with, with the tax clerk to see if she's seeing them continuing, but, um, there's not the same vol-, volume as there was, um, you know, just prior to that thirty-first deadline.
Okay, so your comment was?
Well, we're talking about deferring capital, and one thing I never hear before, we actually know what shape we're in. I think if staff made a recommendation, we set it back for a while and, and look at it. But I don't think we need to get in a panic mode here that we gotta start cutting out a whole bunch of capital projects until we see exactly where we stand financially, especially projects that we have in, that, that are are projects that are going, going to make buildings, like arena lighting that if we don't fix the lighting and we lose lights, we can't open the arena next year, because we haven't got proper lighting in it. We gotta look at what projects were deferred here, if there's something that's, that's keeping the facility gonna go, or or making it go next year. We can't start deferring projects of that nature. Some of these that they list here, yes, they're all ones that doesn't affect the structure or building, but we gotta be careful, but what projects we're looking at, what road projects and stuff we're looking at, at, at deferring along the way. We're ninety-three thousand dollars so far is all we're lost, and probably there's gonna be a thirty thousand dollar saving and expenses that we're not gonna have in there. in there with hydrogen gas and one thing another of these builds that we're gonna save. So we're probably looking at sixty thousand dollars, so let's not get in a panic here about where we stand until we actually see. Our grants are still coming forward. To me, it looks like our tax base is still, they're still paying their taxes. As I said before, the ones that we're gonna take advantage of it are the ones that couldn't pay it anyway. They're just collecting interest on their money, so...
And so if you go down to the next item at the pit, bottom of the page, the treasurer's here is saying, or the plan calls for a complete, a complete, a full-year cash flow analysis based on what we know now. And the finance department with the assistance of the senior managers will have that complete uh, uh, with an end of April timeline, which is the same timeline as, uh, Deputy Mayor Deschamp is working to. And then, uh, and, and as part of that cash flow analysis, bring forward larger capital projects for council consideration. Uh, bring forward the concept of water and sewer interest charges, see below. And then, uh, garbage bag temporary relief, and I think we've dealt with that. So, um, I think we're all on the same page here, I mean, none of us want to be precipitous about this, but we also don't want to get ourselves into a situation where, uh, you know, unless decisions are made well in advance, that last quarter, the cash flow of that last quarter can kill you. So we, that's the quarter that we have to be anticipating.
Really good comment, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, is, is it possible that we could have this cash flow analysis uh, standardized? In other words, uh, a lot of assumptions and variables that would go into that analysis, such as when does, when does the, um, the province lift the imposition of the regulation? Uh, what rules will apply after they lift that, uh, those conditions? It won't be, I don't believe, you know, based on what we're hearing now, it'll be wide open again, and there'll be a slow incline towards, you know, a recovery that will be maybe not even as close to what our previous activities were, uh, well into two thousand and twenty-one. We know there won't be a vaccine before two thousand and twenty-one, and we know that they're already talking second wave, third wave. So, so I think if you're gonna look at that cash flow for the balance of the year, we've gotta put some, put it in a kind of a, an envelope, you know? If it does this, this is what we got. If it does that, that's what, what happens. Sort of a worst case, best case scenario.
The problem is that even on that, we, we're sort of guessing because we don't know what individuals are gonna do with their tax payments.
Well, there's a lot of people out of work, you can see, but in the employment role, and they are not going back to work real quick. They're not gonna have any money. I don't know how you collect taxes when you got no money.
Do we have, um, do we have s- a, a source of, to, to the C A O or the treasurer or the clerk? Do we have a source of statistics that tells us what our township unemployment rate is? So that we could compare our unemployment rate, let's say, of April two thousand and nineteen with our unemployment rate of April two thousand and twenty, and, uh, May of two thousand and nineteen with May of two thousand and twenty? Uh, do we have that source of statistic?
Through the chair, I've not, not off the top of my head that, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not sure where that, where we might be able to get that source, but we can, we can certainly look in to see what, you know, what, what information we can get in that regard.
Well, I think, I think that's what, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mr. Bradley, but is that what you're referring to, sort of, some?
Well, yeah, I mean, the thing is, there's, uh, there's, it's unlikely schools are gonna open again this year, very unlikely. It's not, uh, so people are, are out of work now, there's probably gonna be a lot more people out of work between now and the end of May, and maybe early June. So, I don't know where you get the stats, I guess the government of Canada would have the stats.
I think, I think the unemployment insurance stats are available. Anyway.
Yeah, there may be available ones online, I don't know.
Anyway, I don't want to get bogged down in how the...
Certainly, that's the issue. The issue is, you know, um, we have a rough idea of the various income levels, even district distributively in the township from the two thousand and sixteen census.
Yes.
So we know that wages haven't gone up that much, so we could probably hypothesize on where those things are. Um, I don't know, we, so we know the number of heads, we know the number of, of the amount of money they bring in roughly, and I don't know the unemployment rate as a safe problem is available somewhere. I don't wanna get down into too, too much detail of work for the treasurer, but, um, I'm just saying, I think we need to look at worst case, you know, best case scenario type thing, I don't know.
Okay, so...
We're gonna have to decide, and we don't have an endless timeline. If this is produced at the end of April, in the May meeting, we're gonna have to look and, uh, very hard at some of the, you know, the things we're gonna do to retrench, if you like.
Okay, so the treasurer's gonna prepare the cash flow, we'll see what assumptions that, that are brought to bear to, to, uh, to come up with the best case and worst case scenario on, on that cash flow thing. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on here to, uh, the next page because the next page is basically all finance. Uh, and, uh, the, the staff here has, uh, provided us with a, with a kind of three scenarios, so, um, Mr. Bradley, do you want to speak to this next page? These two pages?
Uh, I can, I can certainly, uh, have the, have the treasurer just to sort of highlight some, some of those areas, but they, basically in all the appendix, uh, all, all the appendices, we tried to look at what would be uh, sort of normal operations, what would be sort of, uh, reduced or modified scope.
Which we've already done now, is that your present situation?
Mo- 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 most, most items are in a, in sort of a modified or reduced, uh, scope. And then we, then, then we have sort of, uh, uh, what we would consider sort of those bare essential services only, which would be pretty close to, to, to being in, uh, an, an emergency situation or, you know, where, where there might be a loss of, of, of a staff member to, to perform some of those duties.
Okay, so as I go down your list, how should, well, and, and, uh, does the treasurer wish to speak with us?
Certainly. So as, as the C A O has indicated, we are pretty much, um, operating at a partially rescued, reduced scope of work. You know, all of my staff is still working, but, um, due to other outside, uh, influences, there, there are certain modifications to their duties right now, uh, being that, for instance, in payroll, you know, part-time hours, there's not very many people working part-time now because of, of the, that's usually in recreation and the facilities are closed. So she, her, her, um, we- bi-weekly payroll is, is slightly reduced. Um, if, for instance, she does both payroll and, and, um, and the accounts payable or vendor processing, if, uh, that particular individual was to become ill, I am cross-trained on, on to do both payroll and accounts payable. Um, so I would, I would be, you know, like last resort to do any of that, uh, work. Consequently, this, the tax bills, um, um, any of the receivables, which is my other, um, staff member, um, she's pro- she can process, but in the same respect, um, I can process any of the work that she's doing as well. Um, with respect to tax registrations, of course, the, the, we can all, we can't register anymore right now because it, it's been kind of sus- suspended until the government orders are fi- are lifted. Um, so any of the registrations that are in the process right now will be held off until such time as the order's lifted. And then, once the order's lifted, then we can proceed, uh, with any of those, uh, registrations. Lottery licensing, of course, there's nobody really doing that, so we, we are only doing it on a, on a request basis, and I, I don't imagine it's necessarily deemed essential for, for anybody right at the moment. Uh, the township office is closed to the public, um, by appointment only, but we are trying to really restrict that, um, in order to make sure everybody is, is, uh, is not exposed to anybody. Um, as I've said, the auditor has been in touch with me today. They are still working on the financial statements, uh, and adjusting entries, uh, hopefully the end of this week, but I'm, I'm still not sure as to when that will, will happen. Um, as a result, the information return will be, um, done until, will, will not be completed until those, uh, that statement is done.
Okay, so can I stop just there?
Sure.
Uh, the reason I want to stop just there is because I don't want to hold up the process uh, uh, of, of getting the information into the F I Rs. And I know you need the approved, uh, the approved financial statements. And I'm just wondering if we need to go through the presentation by the auditors. I know I'm one of the main cats that wants to see the auditor's presentation, but in this particular environment, I'm prepared to just, uh, have the, have the statements come before council with the auditor's recommendation. I'd like to hear how other counselors feel about that because I think that would, that would be a big step to helping you move forward. Uh, can we get some discussion about that? Forgiving the auditor's presentation and just bringing the statements before council with a, with a written recommendation?
I think it would be, I, you know, that'd be good for me.
I have no problem with that, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, well, I enjoy, you know, having the presentation under, under the circumstances, I think that'd be acceptable.
I have no problem just getting the report. All they basically do is read through what we've got in front of us, so content with that, and we need to get our approved, uh, for our treasurer material in this report.
Well, I, I, I think there's more to it when they do their presentation in a formal way, and I, I think it's reassuring in some senses to the public, but we're not gonna be able to do it in a, in the formal way anyway, so... Mr. Robertson and I want Mr. Bradley to come in.
As, as you mentioned earlier, or, or the treasurer mentioned earlier, there's still adjustments to be made to the reserve and reserve funds.
Yes, well, she needs them.
So, if you're gonna report, do you guess at those, or?
Oh, no, there's no guessing. It, it, there's adjusting entries that are done, and as a result of those adjusting entries, there are specific numbers that are...
So there's no guesswork in the final, if you were reporting before you got the audited financial statements?
Well, she won't file her F I Rs until she's got her fin- all the financial statements.
Yeah. They have to match, the financial return has to match the statements.
Mr. Bradley?
Yeah, no, I think, uh, foregoing the, uh, presentation by the auditor is, uh, fine. As long as the reports are, uh, then have meet the recording date and, um, which, and, and can be reviewed by the council, and then, uh, the treasurer can file, uh, all of that into the F I R. When it's done.
Okay, so I think we'll...
I could offer she is since May thirty-first, so I'm, I'm happy with that.
Okay, so, um, can you kind of just signal to the, to the auditors that we're prepared to have their, bring forward their report? If you could get it, if, if they could get it to us by April the twenty-seventh, I think we would just deal with it at council then.
Yeah, his last conversation I said was that he's hoping to get it to me by the end of this week, so I think the twenty-seventh should be, should be...
Okay, so tell him we'll reserve the right to have a discussion with him after the fact, uh, if this, if, if we get to the situation where we can have a public meeting.
Sure.
All right, those are my issues from there. Did you want to comment further here?
Um, yeah, like, it, depending on the reduced, uh, meetings, uh, the quarterly reporting, I did modify this particular report, so I am kind of not gonna say winging it, but I am modifying just to provide, uh, council with more, uh, specific information that, that is helpful in this, in this instance. Um, any of the grant reporting, um, uh, data call and various reports, O S I F, all, have all been extended as a result of this, so that is alleviating some of the issues. I think with asset management, we're going to, uh, that's one area. We have twenty thousand dollars set aside in the administration budget, and there may, may not be a use of that money for this year, maybe one of those things that we have to just put the brakes on that for now and, and, uh, and do as much as we can in around all of this 'cause there's a lot of things coming at, uh, at us on a regular basis. So to try to get all of the managers to, to continue to asset condition and such under these circumstances is a little, a little problematic, so...
Okay, but you will continue your quarterly reporting?
Yes, I may just provide it to you, like I said here, there might be some variations depending on what, what's coming up in that quarter that needs to be brought forward in the forefront.
I think the big report though is gonna, that's gonna be very helpful to us in our decision-making is going to be your cash flow report.
Yes. I think it's, and that's one of the things I've never provided to council before.
Right.
Um, it's a template that I'm using that Emma Foway put out a couple of years ago, and I had, I've been playing around with the template previously, but, uh, feel that it's as necessary to put, uh, an in-depth, um, work in with it and, uh, moving some of the monies in and out, uh, depending, you know, the, the school board money, like I say, is, usually we have, um, have to give about six hundred thousand dollars to the school boards on a quarterly basis. So to have that extended to September will help us, but then that September is going to be the problem, is the problem to me.
Okay, so I think that's, those are the only issues that I see coming from finance. And so Appendix B now is the clerk's department, and did the clerk want to comment here?
Uh, sure, I can do a quick summary. Um, so as you're all aware, if I get sick, uh, the C A O is technically my backup. I'll have to train him if I do get sick on the phone. So fingers crossed that doesn't happen, but if the case is, there will have to be some adjustments made. Um, as a go-forward method, um, as we all know, because of the pandemic, uh, tele- meetings have been postponed as well as, uh, committee council meetings, we have tried to prioritize what needs to come to the meetings, um, and the agenda packages to try and reduce how long your own is exposed. Um, and with that, that also means delaying policies and programs, bylaws, such as our community grants and donations program in order to discourage large gatherings.
Okay, can we stop there at the community grants thing? Um, that's basically a council function. And, uh, the, the meetings are, um, meetings are taped. I would just like to, because there are other organizations that are looking for help here, and I can't remember what we've got in the budget this year, have you got all your applications?
Uh, yes, they were due March twentieth, and of course I do receive some late ones. Right now, at our last discussion from the council meeting, we have it delayed until the May meeting.
The May meeting?
Yes, so May I'm in finance, and then it's determined, decided finally at council in May.
Okay. So you still bring it forward then to, and then finance in May then?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Unless I'm directed otherwise, but that's what council directed us as of last week.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Um, let's see.
Is there any backup to the clerk's position as far as recording of minutes and, and preparation of minutes? Yes, but that's too expensive a backup.
Do you not have any other person available at our office at this stage?
Is there any, is there any, is there any outsource of that potentiality? Working under the direction of the clerk?
I would have to train somebody and have that staff person in our office available to be trained, and I would have to delegate them as a deputy clerk. Because only they can record the minutes and do meetings and that sort of thing.
Yes, I know, I'm, but it's just, I mean, the...
It is very...
Clerk's position is a statutory position. And, uh, I, I see that as a major weak, treasurer too. But I see those, I mean, you two are kind of key people here. If something happens to either one of you, we're in a bad spot. And there doesn't seem to be a backup for treasurer or a backup for clerk. I, I'm gonna turn that problem over to you. I think we're gonna have to have a solution to that problem on a part-time, cheap basis.
It's, it, it, th- th- these are all issues that we're, 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 we're looking into, but there's not a, uh, there, there, there's not a quick and fast answer.
Are the retired people available?
Potentially.
We have two, they're right near township, they're retired from here. We have two right near township, retired from here.
That's a possibility.
I know one's available. He's not taking any more jobs, too, but he's sitting at home.
He?
Richard.
Oh, and there's also a she.
Yeah, that's in the other position. I think we got finance and clerk.
Well, the only problem is I think those relationships should, we should examine to see what the potentiality is there. And we should, and we should try to try to formalize a standby range.
Yeah.
So I I would urge you to do that.
And 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 some of that preliminary work has already been done.
Good, thank you very much. I'll only be happy when I when I hear that it's in place.
Easier easier said than done.
I realize that. I'm 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 flagging it as an issue. Okay, if you want to go on then?
Sure. Um, Commissioner of Oss Services, both the treasurer and myself offer that. Under the Act, we are authorized to do that. Um, most municipalities within Lees and Grenville, as well as Ottawa, SDNG have all considered that non-essential. Um, we have made certain exceptions where things need to be done within a very restricted timeframe for individuals. Um, one good example I've seen was um certain pensioners require signed documents to be sent to a different country that they used to live in and work in. And they need that within a very restricted timeframe, so I have made exemptions in those cases, so that way they can still receive their pensions.
Good.
Other than that, um, we've received requests for something that needs to be signed that's not due for six months. That that's been postponed, and we've told them to contact us, and I'm with ourselves and see how it goes. Um, my requirement's under the death registrations for the Bio Statistics Act. That is a requirement no matter what. Um, I am working with the Division Register and Service Ontario to coordinate different measures. That way we can work with our funeral home, Yules Play Bar M'Garry, to set up different telecommunications efforts to get different portions of the requirements sent to them via electronically instead. Um, so we're in the process of doing that. It's it's a slow process when it comes to deaths no matter what, but we are working through the problems. Um, marriage licensing and wedding officiants, again, throughout pretty much all of eastern Ontario. Most clerks have considered that a non-essential service. Um, for the most part, all of my clients that have requested marriage licenses or asked me to be their officiant have either contacted me directly or have I spoken with them to delay it. A lot of them are delaying their weddings as well because of the unknowns. So we haven't received too many issues regarding that. There has been one or two people saying, I want to get married today. I'm like, well, prioritize things. Think of the safety of everyone first. We can't have gatherings of large people. So most of them have been very understanding about that.
Okay, so with those other comments made previously, I think I'll just move on to item C in the bylaw department. Uh, now, in the bylaw department, uh. I know it's not a required position, but we don't want to lose any of our momentum that we've generated over the last few years. Do you want to speak to this, Mr. Mr. Graham?
Uh, actually, I'll have the clerk, yes, speak to to the bylaw department.
Thank you, CAO, through the chair. Um, as you're aware, yes, it is a contract position under the Act, or if anything else, it's not considered an essential service. Um, but as you can see, I've outlined, quite frankly, that within our township and our council, they have made it quite clear. It is considered an essential service to make sure people understand that um they need to still comply with our bylaws. We are being lenient on the cases. We still have our bylaw continuing to respond, investigate, and resolve things in orderly fashion. Um, and we're trying to be more educational approach at this time to provide people with matters such as clean yards and um garbage complaints. We aren't finding them right away. We are asking our bylaw officer to go speak with them, even if they've already received one warning. At this stage, not to issue them a fine unless it is of dire need. However, given that case, um, we do have certain individuals within our township that do not comply after five, ten, fifteen requests. So there are, there will be cases where we will have to take it to court or issue them a fine if need be.
But as at this point, no request from the OTP to enforce the provincial orders?
Correct. Um, they are keeping us posted and up to date with both the bylaw officer and myself. Um, just filling us in if we they have received complaints that they are concerned about, and if they will be asking our officer um to assist them in surveillance measures or educational. Um, our bylaw officer has encountered one or two cases where he's seen um groups of people just wandering about places within the township, and he's just pulled over kindly and said, by the way, this is this is the new provincial order. Please disperse and go back to your home. Um, so he is.
Is there much of that going on?
No, he's he's encountered it twice, and it was just whenever he was doing patrols.
Okay.
And it was mostly of um younger groups.
Yep.
Which is a little bit more understandable. They want to get outside and play with their friends, so.
Go ahead.
It was just a a friendly reminder, and they took it very kindly and went back to their respective um homes.
Go ahead.
Um, he's still responding to general inquiries um in a timely manner, promoting public education again. Um, providing township policies and bylaws where people request clarification. Um, as well as court dates and POA offices for the liaison for other prosecution offices public. Um, they are closed at this time, and all court dates and POA fines have been postponed by the province. Um, like I mentioned before, bylaw may still issue township set fines as well as provincial orders. Um, but we do not know exact date as to when the PO office may open or the court may open. So there will be a delay in potentially receiving revenue from those set fines.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, issuing notices, violations, orders, um, everything as needed at this point. Still keeping up with regular tasks. It may be reduced, of course, um, for the set fines, like I mentioned before, to alleviate some stress put on the public by the pandemic at this time. Um, as well as preparing submitted reports. He is still updating myself and the CAO on matters that need to be addressed. And just like the rest of our um council, the agenda items, we are having him prepare the quarterly reports, and they're being prioritized.
You're going to continue to come to council?
Yes, correct.
Good, okay, go ahead.
And that is that's it.
Okay, so with the fire, uh, I'm just gonna treat that one just a little bit differently and ask a question before we start. Uh, on page twelve, uh, items on hold, uh, and there's a number of items there. Now, I'm assuming that means that purchasing those items is on hold. Is that correct?
That that is that is correct, right, right at this stage.
Okay, now, on the top of the next page, or third way down, when he talks about training, and he says recruit training program has been put on hold, sixteen hours remaining, regular training topics postponed. Uh, I'm, is there any way that those training programs can be continued?
So so through the chair, I I think we'll certainly, the fire chief will certainly look at staging those once uh, once uh, uh, we we get away from limiting the gatherings to 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 five. I I think probably having uh more more people performing practical tasks that in a in a number of of cases will bring them in close proximity to each other, it is it's not, it's it's not the best time. So they're 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 on hold temporarily, and I think as a- as we we stage sort of uh slowly ahead of that, uh, the the fire chief will ramp some of those uh programs up with with a focus on on completing that recruit training, for sure.
Okay, another question then. Just above that, he talks about the hydraulic cutter. It's available now for fifteen hundred dollars under budget while supplies last.
Correct.
Should he not be ordering it now?
So so in the i- in 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 that particular case, I've I've asked the fire chief to order that and get that savings. As we we anticipate that that model does come from the States, and we expect that that price will uh uh change uh as we as we progress through the year. So that I believe the chief has ordered that.
Okay, and just a couple of other questions. The the quarterly meeting of officers has been canceled. I mean, there's only three or four officers. They could be five meters or six meter, six feet apart, can they not? Can those meetings not continue?
I I will certainly, uh, I certainly leave that to the discretion of fire chief. Uh, I expect that he is updating the 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 officers by by email and having conversations in in those particular items so that everybody's kept informed and 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 up to date through through other mechanisms. But uh as far as the 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 physical getting together, that's that that's the portion that's sort of been been affected by the pandemic.
Well. Anybody have any other questions with regard to this one?
I.
Go ahead. Yes, Mr. Mayor, getting back to the recruitment, how many recruitments do we have that are waiting to to get that sixteen hours in? Do you know?
Uh, I don't, off the top of my head, I'm not. I'd I'd have to look back at one of one of the previous reports.
I just thought if there's ten, we could do two groups of five to get them through because it's so important.
Um, and 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 with all and with all due respect, the 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 practical abortions are are, they're in very close proximity because as you as you well know from from your time on on the fire service, they're they're in teams.
Yep.
So it's it's not like we can keep this isolation.
Six feet, no.
Six feet and you can do the practical, that's that's the portion that's missing, and that's.
Okay, thank.
And 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 a lot of it is at at that Lynn Hurst Training Center, which.
I had that, I had that circled. It was really bothering me. Okay, thank you. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The other question, councillor Hunter?
I just had one, some of the things that were postponed, monthly truck and equipment checks can't cancel the. I don't really think our truck inspection check should be being canceled. I think the trucks should be being inspected.
And and I think that I think the the chief is doing a number of those uh main items in 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 brackets.
He can't, he can't do the do the certifications?
No, the 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 these are monthly uh uh equipment checks. The certifications of the of the trucks, uh, like with respect to truck safeties and that, that's still gonna continue on, okay?
That's what I just said, just equipment checks, uh, yeah, can't really, that's like.
No, no. No, it's not, it it's it's not that portion. It's 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 more of smaller equipment checks.
Yes, my overall concern here is that I hope that we're not um overreacting in the fire department. That's my point. Um, unable to visit or inspect the rescue truck build, I mean, why not? Uh, fire, one year firefighter interviews on hold, uh, one-on-one conversations with him here and then there. Uh, I just don't want us shutting this down too tight here. Train, uh, because volunteers and and their training and their progress is such an important part. I don't want anybody to lose interest in their volunteerism as a fire, uh, as a volunteer firefighter, to lose interest because we've sort of suspended everything for the next goodness knows how long. So I that's my overriding concern here. Any other questions before I move on?
I I was just going to just just respond to your last last comment, Mr. Mayor. Wait, let's not forget, they are volunteers.
Yeah.
They are volunteers, so we can't put them in the face of.
Well, no, if they don't want to, that's one thing. I understand that. Okay, all right, so over on Appendix E, Parks and Recreation, how do you want to handle this one?
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Mayor, will you come to question period?
Okay, so I've I've got the the staff here who's prepared to talk, but let's start with a few questions. Start with councillor Campbell.
Yes, uh, this, through through the chair to our our, Mr. Spencer. Um, the boat ramp is now closed with uh with blockage. Um, is there any, is there any chance we're going to open that in the in the near future?
Uh, maybe I can answer that. That that would certainly be subject to the emergency order.
Well, in fact, it's a lot.
But I, contrary, I've heard that uh that if the municipality is not connected to a marina, then the boat ramp is is can can be can be opened?
Well, uh, and and certainly that was one of the items that came from the Provincial Emergency Operations Center, which differs from another provincial entity that provided uh different information. So I think before opening and closing and closing and opening, we 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 want to make sure that what uh what the correct statement is. And and at this point, I I have not heard what the correct interpretation is.
Okay, because it's, you know, for the mo- for the most part, voters are going to keep a distance. Uh, they're on the water, um, so they're, you know, they're away. Uh, I don't know what's going to happen with opening, the May opening of critical season, what's gonna happen there. Uh, but if there's, if there is a way that we can have the boat ramp open, I would be, I would be uh very happy to see it open, if we can do it. And the last thing I want to do is create a congregation area for many people to congregate. I just don't want to see that happen. But but normally, even on opening day, they they put their votes in one or two at a time, and they're 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 pretty much, they're pretty much away from each other. But that's that that was my question, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna come back to that a little bit later.
Well, I'll stick with his. That's all I was gonna do, is just make a suggestion that we we contact or, you know, the staff contact the uh the NPP's office for for further clarification. It's my understanding that it's only boat launches that are attached to marinas as well. So, um, if we can get full, you know, before we before we do anything, and I'd certainly support both when we open, if that's possible, so.
So so the position that we're in clearly is that, I mean, I had, I circulated the email to council members last Monday after I had had full discussion with the NPP's office. And the NPP's office was clear, they felt that the interpretation was that these boat ramps would be closed. And their rationale, which I agreed to at the time, uh, their rationale was that they wanted to make sure that there wasn't a great influx of folks from away uh coming back to cottage country over the long weekend. And basically, it was largely as a result of that interpretation that the warden declared, and because of the pressure from uh from the other mayors, that the warden declared the prevent, the um, the countywide emergency on Wednesday. So, uh, and I had spoken to all ten mayors on between Tuesday night and Wednesday morning, and named the decision that the right thing was to declare the county emergency because they just did not want that influx of people. So we used the justification that the boat launches and the marinas were closed to do that. So then, the next day, uh, the CAO hands it to me, and this is the interpretation from the Provincial Emergency Response Center. The question was, are public boat launches that are not part of a marina required to be closed? The answer is municipal boat launches that are not part of a marina are not required to be closed under the current emergency orders, period. However, municipalities may still choose to close their boat launches. And ours is closed, and I'd like to suggest to council that what we probably should do is leave them closed until our meeting of the twenty seventh of April. And on the twenty seventh of April, maybe the situation will be a little bit different than it is now. Remember that the provincial declaration order expires on April the twenty third, unless it's extended by the legislature.
It's it's, it expired today, and it and it's extended for another twenty-eight days. They're doing an emergency session tomorrow to extend it.
Oh, for another twenty-eight days?
Another twenty-eight days, yeah.
Okay. So you're telling me till the twenty-eighth of May?
It's uh, it expired today, so twenty-eight, no, today.
Thirteenth.
And then it ex- and then tomorrow it will be extended another twenty-eight days.
So they're calling back the house to extend it?
They're calling back the house for tomorrow to to push it through for for another twenty-eight days.
Not the twenty-eighth of April, because you extended it to the twenty-eighth of April.
Well, not the twenty-eighth of April, because you extended it to the twenty-eighth of April.
Well, see, no, this is not...
It expires today.
So I'm getting two pieces of information again. The first piece of information that I had was that it was extended till the twenty-third. That appears to be wrong, it was extended till the thirteenth, which is today. The house is coming back tomorrow, the house has the power to extend it for twenty-eight days.
That's happening twelfth of May.
That's the twelfth of May. Now, whether the, all of the orders will continue any force in effect depends on the cabinet. If the, if the house approves the extension for twenty-eight days, it's still up to the cabinet to make the decisions. So, I'm still making the same recommendation to council. I think we should leave it closed until our meeting of the twenty-seventh. Now, I'd like to hear something, go ahead.
Well, I would differ from that just a little bit. If, if we get clarification that it can be open, then I would like to see it, I'd like to see it open.
But where are we going to get that clarification when we've already got two conflicting opinions?
Well, maybe we can ask for clarification of those two conflicting opinions. And if it falls back as to we decide, then my recommendation would be, like, move the locks, let people get the votes in.
Okay, so I know Councilor Hunter wants in here. So, Mr. Grant, you're eager to get back in here. Where would you see clarification of these two conflicting opinions?
I'm not one hundred percent sure, but I would certainly respond back to each of those parties and indicate that there is conflicting reports and we need a unified report back to us. If it is similar to the Provincial Emergency Operations Center, where it would appear that it is council's decision to either open them or have them closed, then council certainly is able to make that determination and open if they so desire. I just think right now there's a little unknown and I think we're better on the closed side than the open side until we have some kind, until we have some kind of competency in which it is.
Councilor Hunter.
Well, I think our CIO has the right decision to make the two of them get their act together between them and not one answer. But if we are in the power to open them, and I'd like to see them open too, but I think we need a consensus here between us right now. If we have the power to open them, we'll open them, and when are we going to open them?
Yes.
And our facility manager and recreation director sitting here, the weight's going to fall on him. How is he going to maintain this opening? Because we've all been down there on opening day when it opens. And I've been there days, it's chaos down there, trucks and cars and people trying to crowd in. Everybody's trying to get votes in at the same time. There's going to have to be some system of appointment or one vehicle at a time down in there and they got to get the vehicle out or something here, because we're going to be contrary about all the distances and everything else if we just open it up, so.
Well, that leads us to another question. We had a facility that would launch two boats at once and we've changed it to a facility that will only launch one boat at a time. And I cannot understand why we did that, but that's a different issue. So let's go back to Councilor Hunter's main point. His main point is, what's the collective consensus around the table of opening it if it's our decision?
I'd like to go one more step further. I'd like to open it if we can, under council decision. I'd like to get our new docks, I don't know the situation, where's the chair, about our new docks? Could we start installing them? And keep the boat launch closed, but at least get the jump on it. That if it is everything to go ahead for May ninth, we're ready.
Okay, so I'm just going to ask, are we ready to put the new docks?
Mr. Mayor, first off, if I could just go back to your comment about being able to launch two boats at one time. When the new docks go in, you still will be able to launch two boats at one time. There will be sufficient enough space for both...
Much closer though.
A little bit closer, but there'll still be room to put two at a time, what better do?
Okay, go ahead. Now, are you ready to put the docks in?
No, we are not ready to put the docks in, they're being constructed right now. I met two weeks ago with him and he is aware that we wanted to have them in for opening weekend and he did not see an issue with that. My plan was to contact him by late this week to see how things were going. But two weeks ago, he indicated that he didn't see an issue having them ready for opening season, which would be the May...
May ninth.
May ninth.
Okay, now, Mr. Bradley, do you want in on this one?
I don't think you'd be open enough, I think people are...
What's that?
Wishful thinking. First of all, I'm a boat owner, I have been a boat owner for many, many years, I don't have one now. You cannot get two meters of separation in a boat.
No, no.
Unless you're up there all by yourself. Who's going in the boat?
Well, most boats are bigger than six, most boats are bigger than six feet.
Pardon me?
Most boats are bigger than six feet.
It's two meters.
Eh? Two meters is only six...
It's two meters.
Two meters is six feet, roughly.
No, it's longer.
Eh?
Oh, six and a half, okay, six feet, six inches.
Okay, wow.
Thanks for your question.
Anyway. Okay, I don't want to get bogged down in this.
We don't agree with openness at all. I think what we should be doing, what everybody else is doing, if they're opening them, we should open them. If they're not opening them, we shouldn't be opening them.
Okay, well, we've got...
And I don't know how I personally would get that information, except it comes down from council, from the county or from the province, through the county, et cetera, et cetera. So that's where I would stand on it.
Okay, well, the latest is from the Emergency Operations Center, so I don't know. Anyway.
The thing we should follow, the rules and protocols that are being followed by everybody else.
Okay, fair enough.
I think Mr. Bradley makes a good point, point, there are the rules. We don't want to be the only one that opens our boat ramps on opening day. Or we're not just going to have, our residents, we're going to have everybody from Brockville to Cornwall coming to launch a boat.
Not bad for ten dollars a boat, though, isn't it?
Yeah, and you know...
Not bad for ten dollars a boat.
We don't charge nothing.
I don't know.
I know we've got too many conversations going here.
There's a lot of boats from Quebec that come down in here. You know, live-in boats.
Yeah, but those are mostly marina, marina dockings.
Yes, that's right. So I don't know if the marinas are going to open. I mean, some of them are private operations, so they may just take a chance or something, I don't know. I think we have to look at it carefully and follow what the general communities are doing around us.
Okay, where am I here? That's one issue. I think, I think we can suspend that issue for now, but if I read the table correctly, I, and with all due respect to Mr. Bradley, if I read the table correctly, what I'm reading is that there's a strong will on council that if we can find a way to open these, this boat ramp, that we do that. Subject to a number of conditions, controlled access, controlled entry, you know, we will have to find a mechanism to prevent the chaos that generally prevails. So that's the way I'm reading the situation. Staff's got two weeks to get ready, minimum of two weeks, minimum of three, actually. Minimum of three weeks to get ready here. So I think, I think the staff should be able to read the table the same way I can and realize that it's in a state of flux right now, but there's a strong leaning towards being lenient. Okay, Councilor Cameron.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to, if we can open it, I would like to see it open. However, I'm just going to throw another problem out here on the table, too. At midnight last one second, they start, they start cruising that river. So if you're going to have control, how are you going to control it through the midnight hours?
Well, that appetizes me.
There you go.
All right, I'll be down there.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, your comment about reading the table, we've started to read the book about two weeks ago and we are already starting to put things in place as to potentially, if the docks were to open, addressing Councilor Cameron's issue about, we understand that if we did open them, potentially we would have to have staff on site starting at midnight. And so we are looking at putting some options together, so we have already started to look.
So you will have a plan?
We will have a plan.
Good.
Thank you.
Good, thanks. Okay, that gives us options. All right, now, going on with the rest of Appendix E. Sort of got off on the main issue before we got to the meat here. Now, did you want to address this report here?
Sure, I'll just highlight a couple areas. I mean, obviously, as we know, the parks and rec are the ones that get, are hit the most with the closures of our facilities and our parks and our other areas as of right now. What I've done, basically, I've just kind of given you a snapshot of April, May and June as to the normal staffing levels that I have, just to kind of give you an idea of what we would have if we were to open and how our facility is running. At this current time, I'm not sure where we will go as far as opening our facilities, opening the pools, if that's something that is viable or not viable. At this current time, I would think that potentially they are not. But I don't know if it's too early to make the call. I know we do have a number of our summer students that have contacted me wanting to know if there's going to be employment this summer. And again, I'm just basically telling them that it's too early. The council has not made any decisions as far as whether or not we're going to operate our pools this summer, whether or not we're going to operate our day camp this summer. So I just kind of gave you an idea. If we ran all of our programs, we basically have nineteen summer students that we employ for upwards of forty hours a week for anywhere from sixteen down to eight-week programs.
So basically, you're ready to go, from what I see here, if we make the decision to go?
There may be some stumbling blocks with the pools. Normally, April and May, normally we hire two or three lifeguards that are getting their qualifications in April and May. And right now, those qualifications, they're not able to get those qualifications because all the pools in Ontario are closed and potentially may not open, like the city of Ottawa and that aren't going to open up any of their facilities till basically July first, end of June. So we may have issues of being able to have guards that are fully certified and qualified this summer. But that's, the ones that have been there before and are coming back, that re-certing is not the issue. But we do normally hire two or three new lifeguards that we need and we may have a problem this year if they haven't obtained those qualifications. And most don't, because normally it's March, April and May that the Cornwall, Ottawa and the Y in Brockville offer those sort of programs. So that's just something to think about. Arena operations, basically, I've indicated some of the areas that will be, what we'll be doing over the next two, three weeks. We've already completed some and are continuing on. We'll be out in the parks getting those parks cleaned up and from the winter, cleaning up brush and leaves and what have you. And we will continue to cut the grass on its normal basis that we need to. We're not going to maintain or work up any of the ball diamonds. This diamond over here has the boards up from the arena still and I've asked the Alpibus Club to leave them up, so that then kids can't come in and play on the diamond. So if there's something on the diamond, then the kids can't go. We are having issues with some of our play structures. People are still using them periodically, so we're hoping that they will cease doing that. But again, we can't always be at all the facilities at all the time. So that's basically just a snapshot for the next two or three months. The big thing will be whether or not we open up our pools. And again, that's a decision that can be made. We can have them ready in about a two-week period. If that's what council decides going forward.
Okay, so, Councilor Hunter and Deputy Mayor.
Well, personally, the way that this pandemic's going and we keep extending and extending and as their Prime Minister and Premier both said, this is in weeks we're talking about, we're talking about months here. I don't think there's any chance that we're going to be opening these pools up this summer. If it does come to a time, it's going to be on into first of August or something there, we're going to invest a hundred thousand dollars to the pool and day camp programs to open up for three weeks. I don't think there's a chance of them opening, so.
Okay, so let's just talk about that for just a minute. Would we open in August for three to four weeks? What's the feeling around the table, yes or no?
After having been locked up tight for, since what, March break or the first day of March break, I would relish the opportunity to get the heck out of my house and get into some situations. So for me, if the possibility was there, I would gladly do it.
One voice, another voice.
Two.
Two.
I concur with Deputy Mayor. I think, and I was going to say this about the boat launch as well. You know, people are going to be cooped up and have camping fever coming out their ears and...
So you would open for three weeks?
I would.
I have no problems with the parks and so on, but the pools, I have to really take a hard look at that.
I just, I just don't see the viability of opening up. We're talking about cutting capital projects here because we're losing money and we're going to invest that kind of money for three weeks, so.
Okay, quick decision, quick answer. Nope, Mr. Bradley?
Well...
Quick answer.
I shut the whole thing down.
Okay, all right, so, pretty much even on whether or not we would open for three weeks. All right, so now let's go back to the normal opening is July. What's the, and I'm going to ask Mr. Spencer, what's the drop-down?
Drop-dead.
The drop-dead date for you to know for a July opening?
Mr. Mayor, normally, so the pools were scheduled to open the twenty-seventh of June.
Okay, what's your drop-dead date for a decision of council?
First of June.
First of June, okay, so...
In saying that, I will say that obviously, our numbers are always better in July than the first two weeks of August for swimming, because neither pool are heated. So I'm just kind of giving you that, you know, if you wanted it for three weeks in August, you know, it depends on the weather, right?
Okay, so first of June is kind of drop-dead date for us. All right, let's not belabor this right here, right now, because this thing has a good possibility that... If they extend it for twenty-eight days tomorrow, that's thirteenth of April to thirteenth of May. That's twenty-eight days. So there's still possibility for us to make decisions in the last two weeks of May, get these things up and running. Okay, all right, I'm going to move on here.
I just wanted to comment on something a little different. I just wanted to commend Mike and the staff for, while there are people still using the play structures, they're clearly signed, they're well-signed, they're wrapped. I think that a very good job to eliminate people from using the recreational facilities has been done and I commend you on the work... And I commend you on, on the work and the speed in which that work has, has been done.
Thank you.
Okay, Public Works Department here, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this. The, 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 the Public Works Superintendent has given us this sheet here, which kind of indicates where the effort is going to be. I think we'll have another discussion someplace else, especially when we get into the in-camera session. The capital issue, we've talked about. I'm not gonna beat that one to death, I think we've already gone through that once or twice. Environmental services, with all due respect, I think this is one department which is absolutely essential. We have good people operating it, and I, I know that they've got an A plan, a B plan, and a C plan in place.
A.
What's that?
A.
Well, yes, I mean, that's normal operations, assuming that they've got all the staff that they need. But their B and C plans are contingent upon them not having enough staff. And I don't wanna second-guess their plan here, because you can tell that they've, they've spent a fair amount of time putting all three fans, plans in place. So, I'm gonna move beyond that. So, unless there are questions related to that. Okay, it's all in check, I'm moving on.
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, page, I don't know what it'd be, what it'd be under. I guess page three, or page thirty-one and fifty-three, just summary of actions taken?
Yes.
I just have one, and, and, and I just couldn't see anything. Do we have any volunteer groups or any of our staff available to help our seniors or disability people? If they're in distress, like groceries, drugstores, et cetera? Is there anything in place to help?
The short answer to that, I think, is no, because I think everybody's, everybody's being neighborly to each other, Counselor Cameron.
Just, just from my, my own personal point of view, the Foodland in, in Iroquois has a number you can, seniors can phone in and request a delivery from Lions Club, and there's one other. So, they have that, they have that in place. Little Sisters here has a...
Yeah, I realize that. I just wanted to make sure that everybody's in care of it, if they have, if they need service, if, even if they have the disease, does someone drop off at their doorstep? Do we have that in place? Or have we had anybody that needs, that's all?
I've not had a single question about that.
Good.
I know that...
We've had, personally, we've had two occasions to use the services.
Good. Okay, I'm moving on here. I think we're past item number seventy-E. Council inquiries or notices of motion, are there anything to bring forward there? No?
No.
Go ahead.
Well, I had, you know, I know we're fighting this CD nineteen, and I was on a conference call the other day with Lisa McLeod for the Heritage Sports and Culture. And they're sort of like trying to make us look, I guess, well, not look, but they wanna keep things rolling. So, in other words, she's, they invested another hundred million dollars in the, the trillion grand and they say to get working, because after we're all done this, we wanna get things done. So, I kind of maybe give it to staff, I just don't wanna, you know, we, we got some, obviously, the, the Legent Way. I wanna kind of work on these applications. Once due, the growth grant is due in, in August twelfth. So, I kinda wanna keep it rolling if we can get going, because there's gonna be a lot of money available for this township if we get at it.
Okay, and that, and that is a fair comment.
You know, I just don't wanna sit, I know it's bad, we're in a bad situation, but, and she really meant it. I mean, they want, the town government wants us to get going, be happy, and, 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 and that's why they increased the hundred million. So, that's all I want to say, if we can find a little bit of space for Wendy to get moving on our grants.
Okay, anything else under council inquiries, notices of motion?
Not, not really a, an inquiry or a notice of a motion, but, a notice of motion, but being, my role as Deputy Mayor, being able to be here on the third, the one Thursday and, and the Fridays for the emergency control group meetings, I, I would like to take one second to recognize all the senior staff members, all of our staff members, and, and our mayor for doing a great job and, and keeping everything running at this difficult time. Everybody is, is really, really, really hitting home runs and, and they're working so hard for us, and, and I think they're all doing a great job. So, even while stress levels are high and tensions can, can get up a little bit, I, I wanna take two seconds just to, to tell everyone, mayor, staff, and, and everyone involved, great job. You're doing a great job.
Okay, I'm about to move on. Counselor Hunter?
Well, making a little statement here thanking people, and I do recognize the staff did a, a good job here. Brought up by Counselor Cameron, I think we wanna recognize our small businesses in the township, but a, a great number of them have went out of their way to help our senior residents and our housebound residents and, and maybe help them try to save their businesses. But a lot of them, it's costing them money to do what they're doing. They're not saving their businesses, they're putting their businesses far, farther in. So, I wanna recognize what a great job they did, and a great job a lot of our private citizens that are doing, supporting one another and driving the township. I've been in different, different townships, and I recognize our people in this township are doing a great job of obeying the rules set up by our, our provincial and federal government. Because you drive around our township and you don't see groups, you don't see a whole bunch of cars in the road. You've never seen as few traffic on, on the road driving, driving around. Even Easter weekend, I took a quick drive around just to see what the traffic was. I didn't see any big groups of cars in driveways or anything, or one car, two cars in the driveway. Everybody was separated. Our residents are doing a great job supporting us and supporting themselves. And I just hope that the support they've given each other, that when this is all over, they support our local businesses and try to keep, keep them afloat, because I'm very worried that there's gonna be, a lot of them aren't gonna survive this unless our federal government clarifies a lot of aid here to try to get some money on the table to, to help them, because the township can't do it. A little bit of help we can give them isn't gonna keep them afloat. Whatever, the way in taxes and one thing or another isn't gonna keep them afloat. Our residents come to support them on big numbers as soon as this is done to try to keep them afloat.
Well said.
Yep, well said.
And you hope that they do support them. I've been everyone thanking, yeah, that I can go ahead.
So, yeah, this is no question.
They've done well.
I mean, and I don't think we should wait till this is over. There are a number of small businesses that are doing food takeouts that really, I hope that we can support them. We shouldn't be waiting till this is over to support them.
Some, some people have to wait, because they can't get out. I just hope when they can get out, that they remember the small businesses that put their people on the line to land and stuff.
Okay, any other comments here? Okay, I'm about to move on. And the next item on the agenda is the mayor's report, and I'll be quick. The, seems like, a year, it seems like a hundred years ago that we submitted our job site challenge. I just wanted council to know that our application was received and has been confirmed to be received. And then, the world went silent. Number two, the natural gas extension and expansion project. Counselor Dillabon informs me that they are doing mail-out surveys. I have not seen the surveys as of this date. I was aware of the fact that they were going to do a door-to-door marketing campaign to boost our application. Enbridge was gonna lead this. They had hired a marketing firm to do it for them. It was to be a door-to-door campaign. At that point, I talked to my contact and said, "Well, please don't start that campaign until we get a chance to lay the groundwork for you." Because if we don't get a chance to lay the groundwork, people are gonna be suspicious about who's coming at their doors. Now, it turns out with this, and the fact, they're not going to do, apparently, a door-to-door campaign. And Counselor Dillabon informs me that they've done a mail-out campaign of some sort. Again, without giving us any opportunity to lay the groundwork. And if you, and if you do these marketing campaigns and people don't know what they're all about, they're, they're designed to fail. And I haven't had any way, since Counselor Dillabon informed me, of getting in touch with my contact, because she doesn't go back to work until tomorrow. So, I'm just telling you that this is not good, that they're doing these household surveys without giving us the proper opportunity to set things up for them. Can you do anything about it?
Mr. Mayor, I, I actually phoned them and asked for some information, and they were gonna get right back to me, and never did.
No, I wasn't...
So, you know, they took three or four years to, to get their act together, but they wanted us to complete those forms within ten days, and that was over a weekend.
April tenth, yeah, tenth of April was due on a Friday.
That's right.
And, and it was so difficult to get into it.
It is.
Hello, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I received the notice of the survey. It was supposedly valid up until the tenth. It had a website that you could get online and put all your stuff in. And the, the website was shut off exactly on the tenth of April. So, I missed it.
Okay.
Why? You retired, you should've had it filled in.
No, there's no form, it's just a letter.
It's just a letter?
Yeah, it's a letter, but you go on, on the internet and...
I don't go to the mail every day.
Oh, you had to?
Yeah.
Oh, you had to go to the mail to get it?
Well, no, just to get it, it's a, it's a letter, the state, you have to have it down. I have it here on the, you have to have it in by April tenth, that's all. And it was very difficult, that's all.
Anyway, the long and the short of it is, I'll deal with it as soon as I can talk to her.
Yeah, and I can't, they don't seem, seem to learn, because thirty, over thirty years ago, when, when they did the same thing here in Spenceville, when they were putting the shooters, and they were offered to put the natural gas in, and they did the same, they just did a, a quick mail-out to everybody, said, "You need to sign this and we'll put natural gas in," and we didn't get it, because half the people thought if they signed, they automatically had to pay to put the gas in, and we lost it by, like, two people signing after, who went door-to-door and canvassed for days trying to...
I think that's our best bet, Mr. Mayor, myself, is let us do the survey.
Well, okay, so, just, I, I don't wanna get bogged down in the mechanisms of here.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on my list was to talk about the boat ramp issue, which we've talked about. I just wanna talk a little bit about the Social Services Relief Fund, the one point five-five million dollars that the county has through the Social Services Department to assist the more needy in the region. The request for proposals went out to, out on April the seventh. They're due back on April the fifteenth. Again, a very short turnaround, one week. And I gave pre-warning to the Food Bank and to Connect Youth to get ready for those proposals, so I'm hoping that they did. I, all, next item on my list, I just wanted to speak very briefly about the United Counties Leeds Ingraham Declaration on April the eighth. Just, I think I already reported during the earlier part of the meeting. It was strictly an opportunity to inform, to help five other municipalities that have already declared states of emergency in their municipalities, and to try to reinforce the fact that their boat launches were closed, and they were trying to discourage people from away coming into their villages. So, I do not see that happening here in our township. So, I don't see, as of last Thursday, when we had our last emergency control group meeting, I didn't see any necessity to proclaim an emergency in our township. I just wanna report that in spite of news reports to the contrary on the radio, there is no COVID-19 at Mapleview Lodge long-term care home. That was bent way out of proportion. There were four cases of folks on respiratory, sort of alert. These are older folks that just had breathing problems, but after waiting five days, in one case, six days, finally got all the test results back, and they all tested negative. A, a big announcement this morning from the company called Spartan Bioscience in Ottawa. They're testing equipment that gives you the test result in fifteen to twenty minutes. Their equipment has now been released by Health Canada, and they've begun distributing their products this morning. This will now enable widespread testing. Mind you, limited only by how fast they can produce this equipment. And that kind of testing is what's gonna get us out of this mess. And last announcement, Jones Rail just talked to Mr. Jones. There are another eighty pieces of military equipment has arrived at his site, and they will be unloading tomorrow. And you'll see a big convoy of military equipment heading from Jones Rail to Petawawa. And that is the second-last shipment, and the last train load will arrive probably someday next week. So, that's my report. I'll go to the question period. There are no, there are no observers in the gallery, so I'm assuming that there be no questions. And we do have a closed session, and the chair's looking for a motion, for the motion to go into the closed session.
Myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Ishant, with the committee and the whole proceeding in the closed session, three forty-six AM. In order to address matters pertaining to personal matters of identified individuals including the municipality or local board, because specifically human reserve, who was nineteen responsible, the slide is subject to the solicitor client's privileges, including communication necessary for that purpose, specifically minutes of closed session dated February, February twenty-seven, twenty-twenty.
Okay, thank you very much. About to call the question on, on the motion to go into the closed session. Those in favor, motion is carried, ten-minute break, please.
Deputy Mayor Ishant, proposed meeting does not adjourn, and the whole committee and the whole does now resume at four thirty-two PM.
Thank you very much. Those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. And so, just reporting out from the closed session, Counselor Dillabon will bring forward a motion to approve the minutes of our closed session on February the twenty-seventh. Counselor Dillabon?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel, Counselor Cameron, that the committee and the whole approves the closed session minutes dated February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty.
Thank you very much. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. And then, reporting out further from the closed session, the council met in closed session to receive advice that was subject to solicitor client privilege, reviewed a draft agreement between ourselves and the union, and provided direction to the CIO to, to proceed to implement the agreement and move forward with the plan. And that concludes the reporting out from the closed session, and the chair's looking for the motion to adjourn. Move by myself.
I have the Dillabon motion. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor John Hunter. That committee of the whole now does adjourn at four thirty-four.
And again, just before I call the question on this motion, which is non-debatable, but before I call the question to adjourn, I, I apologize to the CIO if I was a little bit precipitous in my questions about giving up management rights. I, I hope you'll accept my apology. Those in favor of the motion to adjourn? Motion is carried.